America, we gotta, we gotta.
Yeah, we got, we got, okay, we're gonna start. We have a long night, okay? Okay, I wanna call the meeting to order and, okay, I wanna welcome everyone to the warehouse on the Port of April for tonight, Wednesday, April 14, 2001. Apparently, we are on Zoom meeting. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, make a roll call. Mrs. Davenese?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Sample?
Yeah.
Mr. County?
Yeah.
Mr. Akabachi?
Yeah.
Mr. Morrison?
Yeah.
And myself, the Chair Nazir Al Qalasi is here. And for the record, Mr. Akabachi is our clerk. Also, we have present our town planner, Mr. Ken Buckland, the professional engineer, independent consultant, Mr. Charles Rowley, and our Commissioner, Mr. David Requena. If you guys notice, I called everybody with the Mr. or Mrs. I had some few calls this past week and the week before. People think a lot of, because we are a friendly board, a lot of people thinks, there's some people unfortunate things, that's just conspiracy going on. A lot of them, like they say Veronica, Nazir, Jim, or whatever. I can assure everybody there's no conspiracy. And I could assure everybody that the board, eighty percent of the people come before us. We really, nobody have met him before. The other would be the pizza guy or the gas station guy or a local businessman. And of course, the lawyer, the attorneys and the engineers that presents the case, we always see them. I just wanna set some formal rules. If you guys don't mind, with all respect to everybody, please don't call us with our first name. We don't need friends, we have friends. So just forget our address. Mrs. Davenese, Mr. Sample, Mr. County, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Al Qalasi, Mr. Clerk, or Mr. Akabachi, Mr. Buckland. So everybody on the same page and nobody thinks we, 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 we just haven't, like, thinks people are friends and we're helping people out because they're friends. I can assure you, that's not the case. Also, during town meeting, I've, I wanted to tell the board I had a lot of compliments about what the board does and appreciation for our time. I wanted to pass this to all the board members. A lot of people called me in appreciation and asked me to pass it to the rest of the board members. I had a few negative comments, but it is what it is. But we'll take them constructively. Some of them were rude, but that's fine, we used to it. And going back, we're just gonna, we have a very long night. I just gonna iterate on the rules again. You'll get called, the, the notice will be read. For the record, Mr. Buckland or Mr. Akabachi would read the record, where we do notice and records. Yeah, once, once your turn, you state your name and address. Everybody speaks, I'll state name and address for the records. You state your case. And please, we have a very long line, let's get to the punchline. I just don't wanna hear how long you live there and how you pay taxes and people on Mars, they don't pay taxes and all this, get to the punchline and to the point because we're not, I'm not gonna allow a lot of people to speak a lot tonight, otherwise we'd be here until four in the morning with this agenda. Okay, so, that being said, let's get to business and let's do this civilized. Revolutionary business on the meetings of approving meetings for 2024, March twenty, March twenty one, sorry, sorry. March twenty four, 2021, somebody read the meetings?
I did.
I have, I have a question, though.
Yes.
Mr. Akalasi?
No, if I may, if I may, through, the board members can call me my name. That's, that, as board members, we can call ourselves the names as much as we can. Again, the, also, some, some of the rules people don't understand it. We haven't iterate on the rules. I'm sorry to cut you off, Richard. When you address your questions to the board, through the chairman, and no dialogue between you and, and let's say, public or applicant, just direct it to the board directly. Go ahead, Mr. Sample, sorry.
So I have a question on the number six of the meeting minutes. It was the twelve twenty one petition. The vote says five zero zero. I believe Jim Akabachi abstained.
That's correct.
So I looked at the Roberts Rule of Order and it says that if you abstain is a, is a non-vote, it's not even a vote. So I'm just questioning how it was five zero zero.
Okay, it should have been four zero one, good catch, good catch, good catch, so.
Also, on that same one, if I may, sir?
Yes.
I believe on that, on that same article, number six that, that Richard brought up, I don't believe the motions were presented by myself. I'm often quick to pull, to pull the trigger on presenting a motion. So the secretary may have just automatically made the motion by me, but I'm quite sure on that one, when I said I was gonna.
Okay, is, is Sonia on? Is Sonia here?
I, I forget, if she heard, if I made the motion, fine, but I'm, I'm pretty sure I asked somebody else to do it.
She's gonna have to listen to, is she around, Sonia? You're here? I guess she's not. Can?
As the counselor, as a, the attorney, I remember that Mr. Akabachi did not make the.
He made the motion.
I, I really, I'll have to look back at the tape.
All right, so let's, we're, we're gonna continue the minutes until next meeting. Sonia, if you're listening, can, or you passed them? Does Sonia listen to the tapes anyway? I mean, she's gonna listen to this meeting if she's not here? Kenny, I'm asking, can?
Yeah, she'll, she'll listen to it and.
Okay, so very good. So Sonia reviewed the minutes and it will be next time. We'll, we'll hear the minutes next time, we'll sign them. Very good, next thing. Okay, where I'm in the vote, Mr. Swanson from the planning board, they have sent us a letter, if everybody had read it. I would let Mr. Buckland read that letter quick. This is a support letter from the planning board for the, for the Littleton Drive Housing Project.
That's right, this is for the Littleton Drive Housing Project that you approved under a comprehensive permit, forty B, for ninety-three units. The, the letter of support is going to the, the state DHCD for support of the tax credit program application that has been made. It's important that we get, show a strong support locally to the project to make sure we get on the list for the, the tax credits to make the project financially feasible.
Okay, let me ask a question. Would that be across the board with any forty B get that support or just a particular project?
Just for Littleton Drive.
Why?
Because that one is up for tax credits right now.
Okay, but let's say if for instance, we have a forty B in front of us and they came for the same thing, can we give them a letter of support?
If you want to, yes, you can.
Okay, we'd just like to be like fair to everyone, like why give one? I mean, for the future, if anybody comes in wants something like this and if the board are in support, we'd like to give a support to everyone if they could get tax credits. All right, did everybody read that letter?
Yes.
I read it, okay. I'd like to get a vote on it or a motion?
If I might, Naz?
Sure.
Just, just as a point of clarification, I see a lot, a lot of squares on my screen. I know there's a lot of people sitting on the side listening. I'll try to be brief. But just so that anybody listening understands, the tax credit means that if the developer gets the tax credit and they have a tax liability, they can apply it to their tax. This isn't money coming to the town, but through the town, it's encouraging the, the, this type of a development when we, when we so elect to give them our support.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Thank you. Any question for board member on that? I hear none, let's get a motion.
So move to accept the letter, if we need to even vote on this. I think it, I think it's automatic, but if we need to make a motion, I move that we accept the letter and endorse it or whatever.
Do I have a second?
I second it, Richard Sample.
Okay, so more motion by Jim, second by Richard. All in favor, say aye, Richard?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. Very well, you got it, Mr. Swanson from the planning board. I will stop by and sign it at the office, can I, when I have a chance? All right, number three, Derek Rogers. Requesting a waiver, is Mr. Rogers here?
Yes. Yes, yes, good evening, board. Thank you for taking the time to hear my request.
Yep.
So again, my name is Derek Rogers. I live at Nine Mallard Road, Wareham, Mass.
Yes.
I am requesting permission to use a hand-drawn diagram for the location of where I'd like to place a shed in my backyard. So I'm, I'm actually in the process of applying for a variance and looking over the rules. It, it states that I need a, an engineering drawing and I was just seeing if it'd be possible to use a hand-drawn diagram.
Okay, everybody, I like to look at your plan. Your plan is very, very, very easy to read and it's set in the back. I'm okay with that. With our engineer, because it's not very, like, to the front, it's not very critical. However, why, why, just for the heck of it, why are you applying for a variance, you have all that room?
So, so where the?
We're not gonna discuss it, why? We can't discuss it, just a quick question, why are you applying for variance and you have all that room here?
Oh, down below? So that goes all the way to the front yard and there is a considerable slope, so it would cause me to have, you know, significant.
Okay, so let's not discuss it. So you have, you have a case. Very well, so I, I looked at him. I'm okay with the way I have to grant a waiver. I don't know about the board. Veronica, do you have a question quick?
I don't have any questions.
Jim?
I have no problem with giving him the waiver subject to the fact that he has butters. If any of the butters show up at the actual hearing and have any objections, then at that point, I would want an engineer drawing.
Okay, very well. Jake?
No questions.
Richard?
Questions?
Chris?
No questions.
And myself, no question. Did I miss anyone? Okay, do I have a, can I have a motion on that, on the waiver?
So move, we grant a waiver and we see him in our next meeting.
Okay, motion by Jim, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Veronica, all in favor, say aye, Veronica?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you, it carries. All right, continue public hearing. On the continued public hearing, the first two hearings, I'm gonna allow twenty-five minutes max. So let's get to the point as fast as we can. So we give the chance to the other people, so they don't have to wait all night. So we're gonna start two, two dash twenty-one, TGCI, Imanek, a comprehensive permit, MGL chapter forty B, Settlers Glen, Glen three, one, two, eight, B, Cranberry Highway. Okay, the public hearing still open, just for the record, on Thursday, it was the eleven, I believe. Was it the eleven when we had a Zoom meeting, Mrs. Sweet?
Yes.
Okay, Thursday, we had a Zoom meeting, town planner, Mr. Rowley, myself, Mrs. Sweet and Counselor Bobrowski for the case. I believe Mark, was Mark there? Your, he was there as well. We discussed about the layout of the road and everything, just, just for the record, say that. All right, so who would like to start, Mrs. Sweet?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thanks for allowing us to present some additional information this evening. We have three items that we're gonna go through. We will start with, we have a new site plan that we hope addresses a lot of the issues and concerns around drainage and building placements. We do also have some new building plans. We worked on those footprints a little bit and then we have some preliminary landscape plans. So it looks like, oh, Ken, did you bring that up, up the new site plan? Or, or did?
Yes, I did. Did you want your engineer to do it?
Um, if that's okay with you, I'd, I'd like to have Brian kind of walk you through it. Just if, if that's okay, if he can do that. So since the substance of this discussion is gonna be on the site plan, let's, let's get, get on to that. The other ones are not as, as, as important. Brian?
Okay, let me see, if I can bring that up.
Brian, just one second for the record. I see Selectman Slavin is joining us on the, on the meeting too, just for the record. Go ahead, Brian, I'm sorry.
Okay, what happened to it? Okay, can everyone see that?
I know.
Okay. All right, so the changes we have made based upon our last meeting are a couple of things. We did come up with a draft design to go with underground drainage. We gave that to Scott Blagden, who spoke with some contractors for some pricing on that and we find that that will work. So what we have done is we're showing concrete galleys to collect roof runoff for all the units. You'll see in between the units, these are roof runoff galleys. And coming out of the last set of catch basins, we'll have a proprietary treatment unit here at the last manhole going to, again, underground concrete galleys for infiltration, getting rid of the basin. So this can now become a recreation area as determined by the association. So that's, that's the principal change that was made. Mr. Blagden also working with the architect, come up, came up with some different footprints. You'll see we've, that'll be this footprint, every other one having the garages located to the sides. The footprint is slightly smaller in depth in and width. So what that allowed us to do is we were able to pull these units away from Red Brook Road. I know that was one of the comments of the board. We're still maintaining the minimum twenty-five foot spacing between the units. This plan, we've also taken out the quote-unquote layout line. So that's not reflected on this plan. I know one of the concerns from Charlie was that there's enough depth in the parking that it won't interfere with the sidewalk. So the minimum spacing from the garage to the sidewalk is twenty-two feet. All the other units will have twenty-three feet or approaching twenty-eight feet for the, for the smaller unit. And I believe those were the principal major changes on, as shown on this working plan.
Just to, Lynn Sweet, for the record, LDS Consulting Group, Wellesley, Mass. We did also, I believe, add in some snow storage areas. And if, if I can bring up the, the landscape plan, we also did add in some recreational space. Just, I don't know if I'm able to do that. Does that, does?
Those, it shows on the plan.
Okay, so let me just see, where did I go?
What, while you're looking for, for, Mrs. Sweet, I see the twenty-five feet setback between the units. Is this exactly twenty-five feet? And that's the maximum for fire, right? So you don't have to sprinkler?
Correct.
Now, what happens with the overhangs and the rakes? So like in the trim?
Um, I don't think, I don't think I can answer that question. I can.
Is anybody here from the fire department? We'll ask Mr. the Commissioner, or see, if he has a chance. Keep doing what you're saying and we'll get to it. Go ahead, keep saying what you.
So I just wanted to say that we do have our preliminary landscape plans in. We obviously need to have the, the buildings now reflect the, the new site plan. But I think one of the biggest elements is that the board had asked for some recreation space. So with undergrounding, stormwater management system, we are able to have some substantial recreational space, whether it's to put up, you know, a swing set or a sitting area, but we do have that ability now. We also did submit a list of, of what kinds of trees and shrubs that the landscape is planning on using. So we offer for you for our next meeting, a landscape plan that matches now the new site layout plan. But we did want to, you know, bring to your attention the fact that we, we do have, you know, a list of, yeah, a planting list and wanted to make sure that there were no questions or concerns around, around that. I'm not, I'm just not sure how, how detailed your board gets, gets into it. And then we, we do also have new, new building plans. And as, you know, Brian mentioned, we, we were able to create a smaller footprint for the units that have the three bedrooms up and, and pull those units back. And then for the units that have a first floor primary unit, those, those are, those, those are the longer buildings. So I don't know if you want me to bring up the architectural drawings as well.
Yeah, quick, while you're doing this, I wanna go to the Commissioner, Requena. David, on the setback with, between, I don't know if that question would be for you or a fire department question. If you go minute, minimum twenty-five feet, then they're not required to sprinkle the buildings, but they show one, I believe, twenty-five feet foundation to foundation. What about the overhang, the trim and all that? Is this gonna, I don't, I don't want the applicant after they build it, it blows up in their face. Would that be considered setback? I mean, is it including in the dimensions?
How many units are in each building?
There's only two units in each building. So we're not required, I think, three more units require sprinkler. And then we have a separation between each building of twenty-five feet.
Right, so, so that, that is done through our office, Mr. Chairman? Not the fire department, but I don't foresee any requirement for a sprinkler system in this case.
But the rules of the fire marshal is if you get under twenty-five feet, you have to sprinkle the buildings, even if they're single families. And this is my question, is, are the overhangs counted? Is anybody from the fire department here tonight? Okay, I guess not.
Well, we're, we're very happy to reach out to the fire department.
I, I, you should, because like I said, you don't want it to go after you build them and you go for inspection. You don't wanna be like, oops, you have to add the trim. It happened to me before, believe me, in Frehhaven one for one inch. I had to go for a variance for setback, believe it or not, for the trim. So just make sure you check on this, so it doesn't cause you problems in the future. So let's go with the architectural plans.
I'm actually, if, if Scott Blagden's on, I'm, I'm happy to bring them up, but Scott is the one who worked directly with the architect and he can tell you a little bit about what's different.
Scott here? Scott, are you here?
Yeah, muted. Lynn, can you just bring up the front elevation? Cause the floor plans are too material.
That, I'm just.
Possible to rotate that?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna shrink it and try and rotate it.
Did you guys decide of how many styles you're gonna have? You're gonna have one, two, three, four?
We're gonna have two.
Okay.
Yeah, we're looking at two. And what we did, what we did was, we worked with the architect to create a plan that has the garages on the sides as opposed to in the center. And then every other one has the garages on the ends versus in the middle. So that was what enabled, it'll make the streetscape look a lot nicer. There's some variety. It enabled us to stagger them, because this one is far less deep than the other one. But we wanted to keep the other plan. We, we looked quite a bit at a lot of plans. We tried to figure out if there was a way to do them all one way. But the problem is with this particular configuration, with the less depth, we weren't able to, with this width, to create a plan with a master on the first floor. And we do want, we do want a significant number of the plans to have a master suite on the first floor. So that's why we wanna go with two plans and, and stagger them.
Nope, sorry, hang on, just trying to find the. Huh, it's interesting, I, I'm trying to bring up the other facade.
Maybe I have it labeled.
Hopefully, the fourth time's the charm.
There you go.
There you go.
Well, that, that's, that's one with the, with the, with them on the outside. So, so the, the principle was just to have a variety, be able to stagger them, make the street look more attractive, so it's not the exact same home, one after another, straight in a row in a straight line. That's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Mr. Blagden, Charlie Rowley, what is the actual dimension for the roof overhang on your building?
I can't answer that without, I'd, I'd have to, I don't, I don't have all the plans in front of me, I'd have to get that to you.
Okay.
Yeah, let us, let us, let us touch base with the architect in the fire department and we will.
One other time, please. Like I said before, you gotta go through the chair one other time. Let me, I, let me iterate on something. I just got a message, which is through, from the, from the building inspector. That's true, the sprinkler, believe it or not, it's not a fire department jurisdiction anymore. It is building, building code jurisdiction. So it falls under the building department, building inspector. So you're gonna have to discuss it with the building inspector and check on this overhang. They took, believe, like I said, they took it away from the building, fire department, I think a year, year and a half ago or two years ago. So who, who was speaking, Miss Scott, I believe? Or Miss Lynn?
Miss Sweet, I, I had pretty much finished, but we'll, we'll, we'll check into that with the building inspector.
Okay, Miss Sweet, what do you wanna add?
Yeah, so that, that was really what, you know, we wanted to, to present. We hope that we've answered the questions from, you know, that you, that the board raised last meeting, that the peer reviewer raised. And we certainly, hopefully, get final plans to you for the, the, the next hearing, a revised stormwater management report and an answer to this question on the overhang. But we're happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Okay, we need a list of the waivers also as well next time? Or if you could send it prior, so we could review it?
I believe that we have, the list of waivers was submitted with the application and I don't believe anything has changed.
Okay. I believe last time we discussed on our Thursday meeting about the open road permit, the, the car. Are you guys still insisting not to, insisting to get a waiver on that? Or you change your mind?
We'll, we'll talk it through, Mr. Chairman, and then, this is Mark Bobrowski and then we'll update the list accordingly. Recall our conversation, we need to talk it through.
Okay, very good. Let me ask you something, what's, I guess, if, if we're gonna meet next time, it's past your deadline, what is the deadline on that? What's, when is the ninety days? Is Sonia on yet, no?
It's a hundred and eighty days and we're not, we're not close, but.
Hundred and eighty days for forty B?
Yeah.
Correct.
Oh, it's not like a regular variance, huh?
Hey, if you, if you wanna do it in ninety days, well, you know.
We like to get it done quick. All right, so it's, that's good, that's learn something every day. So it's hundred eighty days from that application date, right, Counselor?
Correct.
All right, very good. Now I'm gonna start passing to the board, Veronica. Do you have a question?
I don't have any questions, I don't have any questions right now.
This, I'll, I'll take comments from County, even though he's not, Mr. County, he's not voting, but Chris, do you have any comments?
No comments, I guess, at this point.
Mr. Sample?
Just seeing that new revised plan that they had, kind of looking at that, the last units on the left as it makes the bend. I don't know if that's at the angle, it's completely twenty-five feet. I don't have a rule with me, but I was just, it looked close to me. And secondly, the snow removal area, when they, it seems to be like right in the parking lot of the restaurant behind it. So I'm just wondering, are they gonna pick the snow up and dump it somewhere? Or is it just where they're gonna push it? That's, was all my questions, thank you.
Okay, how, Brian from GF, how wide is that for the cul-de-sac to the? Okay, how uh Brian from GF, how wide is that for the cul-de-sac to the to the setback of the restaurant? How wide is that area?
Uh from the sidewalk to the property line at at its least is like twenty eight, thirty feet. Um and we'd be using that whole backside of that curb space there and could even go into part of the recreation area in the winter if necessary.
Makes sense. What do you think, Richard?
Like a lot of work, but if that's gonna keep it safe, then I guess that's what they can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Uh Jimmy?
Um I have, my question to Ms. Sweet would be it appears that the, I like the idea of the two different plans, by the way, and I like the fact that you guys um got rid of the lagoon so that the kids don't go fall in it and get muddy and I like all that and I like the recreation area, so good, 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 you know. My question is, with the two different sized buildings, it looks like the new buildings are quite a bit smaller and I'm wondering how that impacts the asking of the selling price.
Um I think I'm I'm gonna let Scott answer that question because he worked with the architect, I think that I mean, I know one of the answers is that we found a lot of space on the second floor that was not particularly usable, so in in essence was wasted space. So we think that that the smaller buildings are actually designed more efficiently.
So so you got rid of through the board, through the chair, by the way, excuse me. So if I remember properly, what they did was on the second floor, they had two bedrooms and a space where a third bedroom could be and they didn't put a wall up and they called it a a loft or something, so you got rid of that loft and you eliminated the ability for somebody to throw up a wall and create, make a four bedroom out of a three bedroom. I like it. Thank you. These are my questions.
We we made the, we made them the the units more at the 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 units that had three bedrooms upper more efficient.
Yep.
All right, so uh next, who did, Jake, Jake, do you have a comment?
Uh no comments at this time.
All right, I wanna go to the audio to the public, anyone here in favor of this project, wanna speak? Anyone against? Okay, any any more comments before we send uh that this group away for until the twenty eighth, any more comments? Yes, yeah, Mr. Lawley, yes, sorry. Charlie?
Yeah, oh, one question just occurred to me. Um and then just a comment on the plan set. Uh when we discussed the uh plan set, I believe it was last Thursday, we talked about um the fact that this was in the groundwater protection district or was in zone two. I don't think that it's gonna be an issue, but if if the applicant would uh consent to it, I'd like to ask Brian to include a just a summary of why he feels the groundwater has been protected by the design of his drainage system. Um you're in the downstream side of the groundwater protection district, you're south of the uh onset wells. So it should be a reasonable thing to be able to show, but I think it would be a good thing to have for the record. Um that's the first thing. The second thing that just occurred to me was um I know that um when I was working actively with Mashpee, um it came to the board's attention that the post office will not uh deliver to individual buildings anymore, that they want a centralized uh uh mailbox area. And I'm wondering if that is the case here, uh and if so, where would you put it?
Scott, I guess, oh, sorry, Brian.
Uh well, it could be put off the cul-de-sac, we could uh make a small pull-off area and and put a gang box uh in that location, we could investigate that.
Rather than having it, uh Mr. Chairman, uh rather than having it go all the way down to the cul-de-sac, would it be possible to slide the buildings that are on the right-hand side of the roadway down just a little bit to make a space that's close to Redbrook Road?
I think the score will be for the post office, I don't think they will go to the end, to be honest with you, they really, they usually now I've done something lately and they picked, they want it right at the street, they would not go to the end, Brian.
Yeah, we can discuss that, whether they want it up on Redbrook Road uh with the potential traffic implications, but we can have a discussion with them.
There probably be a pull-off area of some sort, but um I think there needs to be one.
Okay, can you make sure you show it next time, Brian?
Yep.
All right, going back to that face, that zone two protection area, I did read all the letters back and forth. I I am in agreement with Counselor Bobrowski. If the need of housing comes in, that zone two protection doesn't come into play. Uh the design, I guess, the design, it is the design of the of the drainage, so I don't know if it's the burden on GF to make a different design. Or Mr. Bobrowski, wanna enlighten us on that, Counselor?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um I know that the aquifer protection or water resource protection overlay district in your zoning mimics the DEP standard. And it says we shouldn't go over fifteen percent impervious surface, but there is a provision that follows that that says we can, if we were if we were not a forty B, we could apply for a special permit and show that we're doing our best to avoid degradation of quality. And so uh we'll take a long look at that with Brian and have him put together something on point to show you how we're trying to mitigate the greater level of impervious surface, I believe we're somewhere around forty three percent. And um I I'm sure you'll be satisfied because all all of the water is going back on the site, it's not running off, so.
Yeah, I don't I don't think it's gonna take a long discussion, the zone two regulations talk about uh fifteen percent or twenty five hundred square feet as the limits. But then it it goes on to state that you can exceed that as long as there's a uh gra- um infiltration to the groundwater and there's no degradation of the groundwater, so we are infiltrating through the roof drains, we are infiltrating through the uh through the basin at the end and we are meeting Massachusetts Stormwater Management Guidelines. So I believe the, by meeting those Stormwater Management Guidelines demonstrates compliance that we will have no impact or degradation in the groundwater.
So so to be clear, we're seeking a waiver of the special permit requirement, but not the substance of the special permit, we will do our best to meet those guidelines.
Right. All right, we got two minutes left, anyone wanna add something before we continue to the other hearing? If I hear not that I uh are you guys okay to come back, Ms. Sweet, on the twenty eighth?
I I believe we are, um would you, do you wanna continue the discussion on the twenty eighth? Or would you like us to also come with a draft permit at that point? Or do you wanna wait um?
Uh I'll, I mean, you should have the draft for the heck of, we might, never know. We have time to review it, we'll review it.
Okay.
I will get it in, I will get it into Ken or at least a week in advance.
Yeah, this way we'll have chance to read it. Okay. So that being said, the board member, you guys good, so we continue this hearing, if I, if you're good, just make a motion to continue.
I'm moved.
Motion by Jim to continue until the twenty eighth, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Who's uh Jake, Mr. Morrison, seconded, all in favor, say aye, Jake?
Aye.
Jake Morrison? Jimmy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Chris?
Hi.
Richard?
Hi.
And Nazee, myself, aye, so we'll see you on the twenty eighth, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If I might, Naz, while we got Mark Bobrowski still on the on the screen, if he doesn't run away. I believe I understand there was some discussion about the the four, these forty Bs, this isn't particularly pertaining to this one, that's why I waited till we closed.
You're right about the tax credits.
Uh the tax credits, but more specifically what I was talking about, which I think you were the one is the um um the ten percent and whether the town is obligated to continue or at that point, is it voluntary or does the region have an impact? And I know there was some there was some discussion on it, there was something for me to read and I read it and it was as clear as mud to me, so if you could put it in in layman's terms, I briefly, if Nazee will permit it, I'd appreciate it.
Go ahead, if you can, for a, wait a minute, please, Counselor.
I'll be very brief. So the ten percent goal is a safe harbor, that's what it's called, it's also one of the statutory minima. The statutory minima include ten percent, it includes one point five percent of general land area and it also has a yearly quotient that nobody ever meets. If you hit any one of those things, you're in a safe harbor and you can, upon application for another forty B, you have to go through the procedures, but you can decline uh to take it, I think you have fifteen days to do so. And the rule clearly states that that decision will be supported. Now you can take it, some towns do take forty Bs over ten percent, Amherst was the lead case, I did provide a copy of that to Ken. I think I attached it as a link. In the Amherst case, the neighbor said, what are you doing? You're you're twelve percent. The rules should be different for these forty Bs once you go over ten percent and the Supreme Judicial Court said, no, the rules are the same and this is a voluntary decision by towns over ten percent. I think um select member Alan Slaven said last time that if the local communities like Marion or uh one of your other neighbors, Matt Apoisit, are under ten percent, then the regional need has to be considered in your decision making. That's not the case, the safe harbor is a lock, if you wanna exercise your rights to be in safe harbor, you have that prerogative. Remember, though, that every year the census comes out, once every ten years, you may go back under. So you should be planning to stay ahead, especially in a year like this when we're gonna get the results of the census.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor.
And I did provide, I know that they're clear as mud, but I did provide the regulations to Ken, so I I'm I'm sure that he'll circulate them.
All right, thank you, Counselor, all right, very good, so uh we see you on the twenty eighth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, all right, would you uh now twenty twenty-two dash twenty Frederick Mannix, two thirty-eight and two forty seven with road, this public hearing's still open. And who's presenting the case, Attorney Morton?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Yes.
Gillian.
Let's hear it.
One eighty-four Main Street, thank you. Um I know we have limited amount of time, so I wanna be really direct on what we're looking for today. Um so why are we here? We're looking for clarification and acknowledgement from the board regarding the use on this project. Um it's been, it's been something that we we need to look at and I tried to provide to you a memorandum my opinion regarding the use on this lot and what we're looking for. Um so in that, in the memorandum, you saw one of the questions was about uses um in our bylaw, so I looked at our bylaw first to see what um it, you know, if a use is not specifically spelled out, um and there was a comment made that it's prohibited. Well, there's an and to that, so there's an and to if it's not specifically um said set out and also it is inconsistent with the nature of the neighborhood. I'm sorry, the intent of the the zone, which we're in commercial strip here. Um if any, if anyone were to to doubt a commercial strip and the intent of that district, it is for institutional retail uses, um all of the above. So I wanna speak to, you know, the project and where where we are now and we're at a point where we're looking for this clarification from from the board, um and the question is for you to to make that a determination. Um so this space that we're looking to do as we are from the onset, when we first had that in-person meeting, I believe was last October or November, um we talked about this as an institutional use. So this project being that it should be determined institutional and allowed per our bylaw. So we're standing by the the fact that this is allowed in this um in this district um on this site. Um we've gone through a lot of reiterations of this project, I think like eight, um lots of comments. Um the first comment was it looked like a prison, so we heard, we heard everything. Um I would say, looking at um the town and and what we're trying to provide in the commercial districts essentially um and certainly by the relevant uh meeting we've had through the town to capitalize on these areas. Um looking at the assisted living that is over, the one assisted living that we do have in town, it generates a hundred thousand dollars worth of tax revenue on the real estate alone, this is a bigger site. Um but that's something that is coming to the town, so those, one thing that I did wanna comment on as well. So I'm hoping that you took a look at the exhibits that I put um together, that was looking at our Massachusetts Building Code to try to designate what is institutional and what is residential. And you can see there that there's designations between I one and I two and um and what those are, which which does list assisted living. When it's under um five, or it's between five and sixteen, that's what the law says. Um it is um considered R four, which would be residential, obviously our our project is um a lot higher than that. So what we're looking for tonight, to be able to move forward and provide you with everything that that I know you need and we've heard that you need those things, they are in motion, a landscape architect is engaged, working on the design, traffic study, all the items for site plan review, is this is this acknowledgement? So um I know that my client is here as well and can answer any questions to the project um and we'd love to hear on your feedback.
I'm I'm reading your comment, the the third comment, the state court determination. These are building codes, that's not a zoning, but
Hey, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
This is for classification for construction, that has nothing to do uh about what 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 you felt, what category you fell in as a zoning. So this number three for building code, that's irrelevant to this matter. But as I understand right now, I did talk to the commissioner, I think, I wanna have the commissioner discuss, talk and explain it more. Uh I don't, as he said under our sub, but uh under our bylaws, I think section six thirty-one, nur- uh nursing homes are not allowed. Uh however, that you could do if you have the footage and the square, the square footage and the footage. So in other words, if you have like make peace that they have whatever eighty acres, you could do it like treat it as a residential from a zoning, so it would be thirty thousand square feet per unit. If you wanna go with it as an institutional and call it as a, what do you call, it's not a nursing home, uh what do you call it, uh intermediate care. If you do intermediate care, you would fall under that category and you could do it.
Well, our intention is to be, Mr. Chairman, to be very open with the town and has been from the start. You know, this project has started years ago to to see what do we need on this site, we have one assisted living in town and and it's full and it's been full. Um and there's an aging population that
But let me interrupt you, I'm sorry, but I I totally understand you've been here for a year, but keep in mind you guys have been here for a year for the guidance from us, you haven't came with the application. Right? So the applicant came for guidance, which way he wants, he want like to to feed us, you never went to the building department, get a but denial letter, so and now, and when you started this project, we had a different commissioner and now we have a new commissioner that we cannot ignore his letter. I wanna pass it to Commissioner Requena, let him explain it properly. I'm not saying you can't do it, but you might have first of all, you're gonna have to go to him, get a denial letter for what you're doing and come back to us, whether it was special permit, whether it was used variance or to uphold a turn, uh turn down his uh uh his uh what do you call, his decision, he might say, well, it's a variance, of course, the board have the right to turn down his decision and go with the applicant. So I'm gonna have Mr. Requena explain to everybody his theory, he explained it to me quick today, I understood some of it, but it'd be better to explain it to you, Commissioner, can you?
Yes, I can, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so so basically, um I'm gonna touch on one item first, the uh code keeps coming up and you know, as I said earlier, the building code is just a tool to help kind of connect the dots, okay? You can classify living facility as an R four, you can classify it as an I two. You can classify it as an I one un- under the building code, there's there's actually additional laws and regulations that say you should always classify an assisted living facility as a residential use group regardless of what the building code says. At the end of the day, all of that information is irrelevant. We have to look in our bylaw and what our zoning bylaw says. We don't have an assisted living line item in our bylaw, so under section three thirty- under section 313, it says a use that's not specifically authorized is presumed to be prohibited. The other half of that, that Attorney Morton brought up is, and that is inconsistent with the intent of that zoning district. I will not make that determination whether it is consistent or inconsistent with that district. I have to look at the, at the clear language of our bylaw. And it says that if it's not specifically authorized, it's presumed to be prohibited. The intent has to go to the board. I have to find a consistent path for Attorney Morton, for this project, and for everyone else that comes behind them, so that I can tell everyone the same exact thing. And in this case, the use is not permitted. The closest thing we have is intermediate care, which our bylaw clearly says has, has to be defined as the same definition as a convalescent home. Which if you look up that definition, it says under the care of a physician or a nurse. And that's not what this building is.
Okay. So, so that being said, Counselor and everyone else, so we see what Mr. The commissioner having. He, you come back with an application that you do an intermediate care, and I guess it's a special permit. You want to do nursing home? He's going to write his letter. We like it or not. And it's a variance. Then we have, we need to give you a use variance if the board chooses to. And then you have the height variance for the solarium. So these are the options you have before you. Before, before you answer, let me get on quick to the board members. So you could feel them and, and we go from there. Jimmy, I know you want to say something. Go ahead. Mute it. Mute. Get your mute button.
Sorry, sorry. I'm listening and my little guy was yelling in the other room. Sorry if he interrupted anybody, by the way. I'm listening and you said if they come back with an application for intermediate care, and if they, if I'm reading the bylaw right, and I'm asking you and Dave, if, if the formal application says they're applying for intermediate care, then it's a yes in that zone. They don't need a yes.
Special permit. It's a special permit.
I think it's, I think it's, unless they've changed.
Permitted by right.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's permitted by right, but it needs a site plan review. Sorry. Permitted by right, site plan review. That's what I meant by special permit. Sorry.
Sorry, Dave, I didn't hear you.
It's permitted by right in the district, but it would still require a full site plan review as well as the height variance.
This is what I meant. I didn't mean special permit. I meant site plan review. Sorry. My bad.
I just, I just, yeah, because I, sorry, and I'm not, I'm, I hate to split hairs, but I just want to.
I still have that foreign barrier in me.
That's okay.
So you're good. Chris, Chris, do you have a question on that?
I guess, I guess I don't have any, any questions. I know we've been here a long time going over this case. You know, whether industrial or residential. I know we never got a full set of plans. I know I never saw any industrial kitchen, so I never thought or believed that it was a real assisted living place with a dining area. So I believe the parking was, you know, not adequate. I think it's too big of a footprint on that property. I think it's too close to the road and I didn't see really too many buffers. And that's, I guess that's all I have to say. That's my opinion. Thanks.
Right. Well, to be honest with you, quite frankly, right, I personally now know exactly what we're looking at. Before, we were all confused what, what to call it, what it is. Now, at least now we know what it is. Veronica, what's your comment? Right, Veronica? Mr. Vanis?
Hey, I don't have any comments at this time.
Richard?
Oh, second, everything that Chris said, it was well spoken, Chris.
Okay. And Jake?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. So back to you, Counselor Morton.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. Number one, if we needed to do another application for a variance, we'd ask for a waiver of that application fee since we've already applied for that last November. In addition.
Fine. That's fine. But you, but this time, last time you came with us without the commissioner letter. Now you want to go to the commissioner letter and let's work on his letter. So we, there's no confusion.
For clarification, we were in a situation where it was a prior commissioner. So we did have a denial letter, not written very well. But anyways, as an aside too, so by right, an intermediate care center on that site is by right. And so I know there's been comments and I know some of the members are talking about the density. If we weren't seeking the solarium and we're just doing an intermediate care center, I, I guess the commissioner would have to review that. But that could even go through the planning board if it didn't have any relief needed from, and it just needed site plan review.
Yeah, but you ask them for a variance as well. So it'd be one stop shop.
There wasn't, if there wasn't a variance on there.
I don't know. Is it SPZ or SPP, Commissioner?
So it would be by right if they didn't have the height variance and it was an intermediate care, which would push the site plan review to the planning board.
Planning. So if you don't have a variance, you, you won't be coming to us. You go to planning. If you want a variance, you'll be, it will be with us. Okay? It doesn't mean, I mean, you still can go for a variance. Doesn't mean you get it. But once it goes to variance, it stays with us. I mean, we could, we could deny the variance and grant the site plan review. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Mannix would like to say something. Are you good? You, mute your button.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to clarify something regarding the state building code. The, the part of the code that we were talking about is the use and occupancy as designated by the state, and it's clearly an institutional use. The, the commissioner points out that it, it becomes an R-4 use. We, we spoke on the phone. He said an assisted living becomes an R-4 use under the code. Am I correct, Mr. Commissioner?
So it all depends on how many units. You can be an R-4, an I-1, or an I-2.
Exactly. Exactly. No, no, I understand. And, and, and so according to the state building code, if it's more than 16 units, it becomes an I-1. Is that correct?
Under the building code, but there are other exemptions to that, Mr. Mannix.
Well, I, I understand there may be, but is it correct to say?
I, I, I need to stop this. This is, this is not a word to argue. This is not our jurisdiction, building code. And that's why I mentioned to the attorney first, Attorney Morton first, that what, how the building, state classified the building code has nothing to do with our bylaw. So saying down and arguing it, it's not going to get us anywhere.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not, I'm not here to argue. I'm.
We are here to argue, but let's argue the right thing. We are here to argue. That's why everybody's here. We have to argue the case. But let's argue the right thing. It's not our jurisdiction. Building code does not have jurisdiction. Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
I, I understand completely what you're trying to say, but I also would like to say what I want to say. And then what I want to say is that I came before the board, not from a multifamily, which is what the building commissioner's letter is basically stating, that I'm, I'm presenting before the board. And I am not presenting a multifamily residence before the board. So I don't, I don't seek variance for a multifamily. I don't want one. He suggested to me that I could seek a variance for the multifamily to the board, or I could go to a 40B to get a multifamily. I don't want either of those things. What I want is an institutional use, which is something that's been before the board. And we were asking for an institutional use. And I guess what we have to do is define the institutional use that apparently is not clearly defined in the bylaws. Now, the other thing I have a problem with is that, you know, the, the whole idea of this use has been brought before the town, before the boards, and before everybody. It's never been a multifamily. And to say that it's a multifamily is a letter that's a red herring to this whole project. And I've been very, very patient and very willing to cooperate with everybody in this matter. And I, I work with the, the fire department. Clearly, we talked about ambulances. We talked about all those things, access for rescue. Never, never was a multifamily used discussed or wanted. In fact, with Ken Buckland, he told me that I had to have 650 square feet of space and not have, not count the bots, not count the, the bathroom and, and the.
Hallways.
The hall, yeah, not a hallway.
Closets.
Closets in the space. And, and, you know, we, we had this discussion with the board about increasing the size of the units. And, and we, we decided not to increase the size of the units because it wasn't a multifamily. I don't want it to be a multifamily.
We didn't, we didn't say, we didn't point, we're not pointing a finger at you saying, oh, you're doing a multifamily.
Mr. 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 Aquina is pointing a finger at me and saying that he says these plans are multifamily plans.
Mr. Aquina is a building commissioner. He makes his own decision. This is not for us to lecture him. I can't lecture Mr. Aquina.
I'm not trying to lecture, Mr. Chairman, I'm not trying to lecture anybody. I just find it very difficult to accept.
Well, I understand, but here is what's before us. Let's, let's see what's before us. So we're not on the same page.
Right.
You go, the commissioner right now telling us, if you want a nursing home, you need to vanish. So what do you want like us to do? Rip up the paper, say, forget that what you think, David, we're not. And it's not a variance. We can't say that. And if we're gonna go and give you a use variance, we just deny two units on half an acre down the street from you. So how are we going to give you 80 units on two and a half acres? So what Mr. Aquina is saying, if you go as an intermediate care, you're allowed by right. And unfortunately, and we have to adhere to the rules. We have to follow what our commissioner tells us. We can't just take his paper and say we don't care. It doesn't work this way. And we love that. And listen, most of the board members love your idea. They love your project. We'd like to see it happen. But we have to adhere to the rules and we cannot ignore what our commissioner writes. We can't just take it.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I understand that. My point, I guess, and I'm, maybe I'm making a little bit too forcefully. I'll back off.
No, it's okay. It can be forced.
Well, I, I have a tendency to be. My port, my point is, I would like to know from the board or from the commissioner, just exactly what the interpretation is of the code and what's allowed in that space and that, in that zone. Okay? And the other thing I would like to know is why somebody says I didn't have a refusal letter when I came in with the prior commissioner to the board with a refusal letter and never once was I told that I couldn't have an assisted living facility in there. I, I expected as a new commissioner, and I expect that his interpretation is something that you want to go along with, I guess. And, and, and I will too. But I would like some more back and forth, if you will, so that I can understand after all these months and not have a complete reversal of what I've been working for, for the last, how many, how many weeks, how many months have we been working on here?
All right. I want to, I want to pass quick to Jim, Jim Monitor, but he usually has some mixed.
Through, through the chair and, and to Mr. Savannah. I, I, you're asking for guidance and I feel as though the chair is trying to give you the guidance and say, and he's saying to you, if you come to us looking for intermediate care, you've got a green light, mister. And I don't understand if you're not hearing that or if there's a problem with the terms intermediate care. So I'd like through the chair to Mr. Savannah, I'd like to know if there's a problem with the wording intermediate. Is that the right, yeah, intermediate care center?
So, so Mr. Akabachi, I, I am hiding behind my daughter's name. But the, the point here is that the building commissioner stated that an intermediate care facility, in his mind, requires a nursing staff. Is that correct? Did I hear that?
It requires a doctor and a nurse, or a nurse, I believe. I don't know what's the definition, but I'm sure there's definition to it.
I would, I would like.
Let's hear it from Mr. Aquina. Go ahead, David.
All right. So in our bylaw, intermediate care is permitted by right in the commercial strip. Our bylaw does say that, that the definition of intermediate care is, has to be that of what you would define a convalescent home. A convalescent home definition and intermediate care definition are under the supervision of a physician or a nurse. That's the definition.
Okay. We get into the 25 minutes. So Mr. Mannix.
But Mr. Chairman, I have to, I have to, I, I don't want to take any more time except to say that that is incorrect, Mr. Mr. Commissioner. It does not say that.
I, I respect your decision, but let me, let me say something. So what do you like us to do? You could come forward and ask for a use variance, or you could come ask for site plan review. I mean, we, we're not going to argue back and forth. We, I apparently Mr. Aquina wrote his letter and we have to adhere to this letter. And you could apply. You could also, your attorney could apply for us to turn down his letter to uphold the, go with you. So if, if that's the way you want, we could do that.
That's in essence what, you know, our review was. It's sort of hard to swallow at this point to have to re-cement a full variance on something that, that we've been working on. So, but I understand you're, you're held to the bylaws. And our bylaw does not, does not list assisted living. So it's a failing of the code, you know, and the bylaws.
Listen, let, let me, let me cut this short. It's, it's, it's really simple. I think that the building commissioner and myself shouldn't sit down and in my attorney, whoever else wants to sit in, maybe the town planner, and discuss this so that we don't have these kind of debates over how many angels are in the head of a pin.
You should. I think you should.
Once, once we determine what the classification should be for this property, we will come before the board with the proper classification, that's a proper use. And, and, and we'll, we'll move from there. In the meantime, I, I would make an appointment. I'll, I'll, I'll handle that outside this, this hearing. I think, I think at this time, you've given me the guidance I need. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's what I'm trying to get to. So let's get to the boundaries. So that, that being said, anyone from the public want to speak against or favor this project? Mr. Rowley?
I just have a procedural question, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I thought I heard you say that you're only, this application was only before you for discussion. But the information that I got when I first got involved in this included a request for a variance for the height. And it also included the application for site plan review. So my question is, where are you in terms of the timing on the variance request in onsite plan review? Is the fact that this has been continued so long, those are still in effect?
Let me look. Last time, I think Attorney Morton gave us an extension last time. Till when, Counselor? Do you remember?
Mr. Chairman, till the April 28th for the decision deadline. I mean, clearly this is circumstances out of our control at this point. And, and we're going to, we're working our hardest to be able to.
Okay. Let's do, let's do this.
Chairman, my only, my only point was I just didn't want to see a deadline pass without an understanding that a decision was needed, either one or the other.
So this is where we go, this is what we're going to do. Mr. Mannix, Attorney Morton, Counselor Requena, they're going to get together and Kim, our town planner, Mr. Buckland, they're going to sort this out by mid next week. I'd like to see a letter. I like to see a letter from Mr. Buckland or Mrs. Raposo send me something to see where we're heading. And I expect an extension from you, Counselor, at least two months. Okay? And then we go from there. Okay, we pass, we way past our time. So let's make a motion to continue.
So move.
I have, I have a motion to continue. What's, which one is this? 22-20 by Jim, do I have a second?
A second. Richard Temple.
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye. Veronica?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And Nazir, myself, aye. We see, let's go do our homework. Everybody does their homework and we got it right this time, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you.
alright what what way too many alright three twenty-one Paula Ventura five ninety county road and that's a continual public hearing public hearing still open mister Ventura state your name and address for record tell us where you are
hi I'm Paula Ventura my address is five ninety county road in West Wareham
okay so well what did we what did we leave it last time with you what did we what did you do what 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 kind of homework you did I know you we saw your plan here showing your subject
right
so what are you trying to do now are you trying to do an addition or you still want the variance for a two unit
I'm doing an addition but I I reduced the size because there was an issue with the setback
yeah
so now with the new size it falls within the requirements the other issue was where my subject was
uh huh
and so I've I've given you the paperwork to show that it is on the other side of the house so I'm not able to put addition on that side of the house it also is a five bedroom subject and I only have three bedrooms in my house currently so that will accommodate another bedroom
okay uh the so what you said back there is twenty in the rear twenty you meet the back and but you don't meet the side so you're looking for a variance for the side oh you have twenty
yes
so what so you don't need us
right well it changed I changed it because I it was yeah it was too long before so now I've reduced it to the twenty feet
okay
so it's all within all the
so you don't need this board you're good
correct so what so where do I go from here
so you just ask us for uh withdrawal uh uh without uh for like withdrawal to withdraw your application will deny you without prejudice that's mean you could come back anytime and you just go to the building department so what you all what you ask have to do now I would like to withdraw my application
okay I would like to withdraw my application
okay very well board member questions Veronica I guess she's muted Bronca you have a question
yeah I have no questions I'd actually like to make a motion to accept the withdrawal
okay
I will second that
second by Jim all in favor to withdraw uh hearing three dash twenty-one Paula Ventura five hundred five ninety county road all in favor to withdraw the application say aye Veronica
aye
without prejudice
without prejudice
Chris
aye
uh Jake
aye
uh is actually Jake wasn't saying on that but that's fine that's Chris and mister sample Richard
aye
and myself I did I miss anybody
Jim I
Jim sorry sorry Jim man I can't miss you you're so big obnoxious
it's because I'm so easygoing and and friendly
yeah until somebody pushes you then that side shows up alright so you you're good so you can just go to building department you don't need us thank you mister Ventura alright eight dash twenty-one yeah thank you eight dash twenty-one KB Conlon seventy-eight West Boulevard where's this one it's mrs. mister mrs. Conlon here
yes
where are you man
I'm right here
ah okay alright so public uh just okay it's still a public hearing still open uh this one mister sample sound on this matter I did go look at it and I get your plan and I understand what you're trying to do but let me ask you you have a full basement there that's why you're doing a bulkhead
I'm sorry
you have a full basement that's why you built in a bulkhead
yes because I explained in my original letter that the entrance to the basement is a um hatch in the floor that is right in front of the front door
right yeah okay I don't I did somebody from the board go check the property
I did uh today today I was down there driving around and uh it's really crazy to see that little dirt road go right in the back of all these houses that are there it seems to me that it's been used as a means of egress uh to get in and out of property and it's also used for parking uh again if she does the construction on that I don't know if we're getting into town property that she's gonna dig into or not um there's still uh that's what I questions I have about it but it's definitely a unique situation that they have there
right well she after she does the foundation she will need an Aspel to get the building permit and the commissioner will review it make sure she didn't encroach on town property so
thank you sir
okay you're very welcome so we're gonna pass questions to Veronica
um I don't have any questions at this time but yeah my opinion hasn't changed I I'm not particularly in favor of this because of the closeness to the abutting property
okay so you don't you don't see the hardship you're saying
um not really I think that there are a lot of um homes that have crawl spaces not even full basements that have to be accessed from indoor um and I think that perhaps some interior alterations could be made to accommodate um better access
okay very well uh this one uh sample by Jake can I hear from Jake
um I don't see any problems with this project
okay anyone from the public Chris I'll take your input even though you're not sitting on it
I'm also I'm also said I don't have any questions thanks
okay and uh anyone in the public would like to speak in favor last time we had a lot of favors anyone again
yes yes my name is Denise Hickson uh Benton Street Hockington Mass I also own property and onset I I I just would like to say that I think it's a dangerous situation where the bulkhead uh where the access to the basement is right now in this house so I believe that we need to help mrs. Conlon come up with a solution to this problem if you're not going to approve what she's presented but I I think it's a seems to be a reasonable uh approach to what they need to to do there
thank you yes mister Cavali
my name is Joe Cavallaro and I am a custom bulkhead builder and installer and it is very possible to put my kind of system in that area uh in meet your setback requirements
okay are you the contractor
yes I'm the designer the contractor and installer
alright so once you put the foundation if that goes through you're gonna need an Aspel and it has to make sure exactly what the plan shows okay uh anyone else
a point cat and as he thought Jim again interrupting uh um my my question is maybe I misunderstood Joe are you the guy that's gonna put it in for this applicant are you suggesting that you could do something different than what she's proposing that would that would be more satisfactory to this board
yes we have a plan a heated steel base it would go into up the foundation wall you'd have three steps inside the basement the basement wall is ninety inches high I believe and uh I can make the length from the house out any dimension uh we're looking at fifty-nine inches uh to make this work
okay uh fifty but you don't have fifty-nine inches that's the problem
no that's okay so let me clarify this for the couple of things that have been going on here um you guys challenged me to get a new survey which I did you asked me to get drawings which I did you asked me reduce the space which I did I went from sixty-four with a Bilco to fifty-nine that will be very expensive for me to do I researched I found this custom builder that does this professionally that's exactly what he does he's reduced it to fifty-nine inches so I reduced it there um as for um you know the access to the basement um there the it's a very very small um amount of space to get access in the basement everywhere on that space would be dangerous um it is the most dangerous uh in front of the door but it is not a good situation um any point somebody could leave it open it's um I I certainly don't want to would not um pursue this unless it was not a dangerous situation I mean why would anyone at this point I haven't access to the basement but I want a safer one so that is my issue um yes I am abutting up onto um public property there are many uh houses behind there that have had renovations um and there was not any major um um issue or um
uh wait uh miss let me make it easier for you miss Conlon we're not arguing we're not arguing it's not I understand but if you if you had sixty inches you don't mister Cavalli you don't have the room you you have four point nine nine two feet you have fifty you have exactly fifty-nine inches I don't want you go out and put that foundation then you're encroaching it
it's not it it it's not a a foundation it's a prefabricated steel base
okay but what happened if encroach on or say you have are you sure you'll make it
yes we make it
and you'll have like a couple of inches saved for safety
absolutely
okay that's all what I'm asking alright let's move forward in this anyone else on the board wanna add something I hear none let's go for to close please
so so moved
so we have motion to close by Jim I have a second
I'll second
second by Veronica all in favor say aye uh Veronica
aye
Richard
aye
Jim
aye
Jake
aye
myself I okay any discussion now I hear none let's get a motion
I I'll make a motion to approve as presented
okay second by Jake and with the condition you need to have an Aspel before after the foundation mister Cavalli okay you present the Aspel from engineer to the building inspector he won't give you a building permit without it anyway okay so I have a motion by uh to grant by Jim and second by Jake all in favor say aye Jim
aye
Jake Jake
Jake's muted but I think he said aye
let me hear aye Richard he's aye I I can't hear you
aye
okay Veronica
denied
denied Nazi myself I it carries four one zero so you got it thank you mrs. Conlon
thank you I appreciate you
a good one right uh oh no bear with me guys I lost my
the zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on April fourteenth twenty twenty-one at six thirty P M to consider petition number thirteen twenty-one for a special permit and or variance from the requirements of article six table six twenty-one and article thirteen section thirteen fifty-two of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Stephen Belcher fifteen Mead Street Wareham Mass proposing to construct a new twenty-eight point five feet by six foot covered farmer's porch addition on the front of the pre-existing non-conforming single family structure booked fifteen Mead Street Wareham Mass assessors map fifty D law three twenty-seven in the R thirty zoning district
alright and uh mister uh the applicant is the applicant here
yes
okay wanna state your name address and tell us what you doing
my name's Stephen Belcher address is fifteen Mead Street uh petitioning to put on a farmer's porch on the front of my house
okay alright uh re commissioner alright I must start the board questions Jed Jimmy
um I have really no questions I looked it over real good prior to the meeting um I would like to suggest if there's no opposition from the public that we could just move um rather quickly to approve this
okay this one uh Chris Conte will be saying on this matter alright uh Veronica
um this is I'm sorry but did we is this a special permit or variance
it is a variance
okay and can we know what the hardship is
the current uh front of the foundation of the house is twenty-two feet off the road line and we want a six foot uh farmer's porch which encroaches uh four feet on into the twenty foot setback so we'd be at sixteen feet off the road edge
let me clarify something this is only a variance if the board feel it's a balance if we believe because the whole neighborhood is like that and he's is he an existing non-conforming
he is
he is so he's existing non-conforming we could
wait a minute let's if I see Aquina coming on let's let's verify that
if I might add one item
David is it is this an existing non-conforming David
if he's in the R thirty and he's over twenty feet now he is not pre-existing non-conforming
oh so he's not okay
I believe he has more than twenty feet
uh
up to the structure now so he's creating a new non-conformity
okay so if if under section thirteen fifty-two we if we believe it's not detrimental we could do a special permit
not not for a new non-conformity mister chairman that's
ah okay oh okay because he meets setback right now so but your letter here saying
right
that we could give him if we believe it's a it's it's not detrimental we could grant a special permit
pull up my letter now mister chairman
excuse me mister chair
yes
but the letter says it's currently approximately seventeen three inches and he's proposing a setback of sixteen nine inches so it's more of an intensification
then it is a special permit
if the board feel fair correct because he doesn't have the twenty feet okay alright Jimmy you saw you made your case uh Jake I have nothing at this time alright alright so and Richard
I there and I just saw that he and I spoke with the homeowner he said that he had the set of stairs was already there and it was already out that far uh protruding from the house so I I I'm I'm with him I I think that it's fine
yeah anyone in the audience wanna speak in favor of this project I see none anyone in the audience and the public wanna speak against this project I hear none let's move to close
so moved by Jim Akabachi
okay do I have a second
I second
Richard sample
I can it's gotta be Chris Richard sorry Richard
oh that's right I forgot yeah
I second Chris County
second by Chris of all in favor to place to close say aye uh Richard I'm I'm sorry Chris
aye
Veronica
aye
Jim
aye
Jake
aye
myself I okay now uh does if the board feel it's not so detrimental we can move to a special permit versus a variance how does the board feel
I make a motion that the board find this to be non-detrimental to the neighborhood and should be treated as a special permit
that's a motion by Jim any discussion on that I hear none do I have a second
second Chris County
second by Chris Conte all in favor say aye Chris
aye
Veronica
aye
Jake
aye
myself I Jim
aye
okay now on the special permit what's
I make a motion that we approve uh a special permit with the plans as presented with standard conditions
okay I have a motion by Jim any discussion on that none I have do I have a second
I second Chris County
second by Chris Conte all in favor say aye Jim
aye
Veronica
aye
uh Chris
aye
and myself I Jake
aye
alright with standard condition thank you it carried
thank you mister chairman thank you
uh is is anyone here with an attorney in all the cases left for us I see attorney Ishihara Ishihara is anyone else with the counselor tonight I'm gonna have I these as you all know you pay for on these applications are very expensive and I would like not to put more burden on the applicant so I wanna jump to the last one with the attorney Ishihara because I don't want the applicant to pay more money so we're gonna take this matter out of order and counselor which one is yours
thank you mister chairman
nineteen twenty-one
nineteen
yes it's the petition of Emily and John Heavy
petition of Emily and John Heavy
okay can you read it onto the record Ken
design board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on April fourteenth twenty twenty-one at six thirty P M to consider petition number nineteen twenty-one for a variance from the requirements of article six table six twenty-one To consider petition number nineteen twenty-one for a variance from the requirements of Article Six, Table six twenty-one under the Wareham zoning bylaws to John and Emily Heavy, Evie of seventy Rose Point Avenue, West Wareham Mass, proposing construction of a new dwelling on lot number seventy-five located at forty-three Marine Avenue, West Wareham Mass. The sessions map seventy-eight dash one, lots seventy-five and seventy-six in the R thirty zoning district.
All right, counselor, yours.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do I have the ability to, to do the share screen thing?
Yes, you do. Do you know how to do that?
Well, let me try and then you'll know.
And we'll find out what your abilities really are.
Find out what my abilities really are. Just an overview, the, my, my clients and their builders also with us as well, Mr. Mike Fitzpatrick. They're seeking this variance for the construction of a two-bedroom, single-family residence at forty-three Marine Ave. And just by way of just a little background. The reason for they're seeking the variance is because Mrs. Heavy's sister, without getting into a lot of her health issues, but she has some serious health issues. And the proposal for the new house would basically put this new house kind of kitty corner adjacent to where Emily and John Heavy live. It would make it much easier for Mrs. Heavy to look after her sister. Her sister has also has lost her son and so does not. So Mrs. Heavy basically asks, as her primary caregiver, taking her to her medical appointments, checking up on her, taking her to the cemetery to visit her son. So that's the reason why we're pursuing this. Let me see about the share screen thing. I just want to give a little overview.
Counselor, let me, you are asking for a variance to create a buildable lot. Is this what you're asking?
Bear with me one moment. Yes, that's correct.
So you have an unbuildable lot and you wanted, you asking for a variance to make it buildable? That's, it's not a buildable lot.
That's correct. So we're in an R thirty district. The the subject property has eight thousand square feet and a hundred feet of frontage on Marine Avenue. The proposed building would, however, meet all the current zoning building setbacks for R thirty. We're not looking for any variance from that. So this is, thank you, Ken. So this is basically our site plan. The the house will be sighted. The frontage for the lot is on Marine Avenue. If you look at the kind of the upper left-hand corner of where the subject property is before you get to all the plan construction details and all that, that's where Emily and John Heavy live currently. So just by way of a little bit of background, Emily and John Heavy bought the property which abuts the subject property for a distance of about fifty feet. It's kind of kitty corner abutting. So they brought this property back in, I believe, two thousand and two. When they purchased the subject property, I think their thinking was that because of the small lot exemption and all that, that this would, that this subject property would be a building lot. However, as you can see from the letter from Mr. Requena, the the position of the building commissioner was that the subject property merged with the Heavy's existing property and therefore was not entitled to be grandfathered, so to speak, as a, as a small lot. So that's basically what we're trying to, trying to do. Because of the juxtaposition of the Heavy's existing lot and this new one, the, the subject property. Where they're proposing to cite the new house is actually, I would, I would argue is, is actually a logical place to put this particular building. It makes, it makes sense where it's positioned. As you can see from the photos, it's, it's a nice lot, if you will. It's not something that has a lot of well, let me just take that back. So in any event, so we're hoping that you will
If I may interrupt, the position of the house and the looks, we have no doubt, it's a good-looking house and everything. But when I'm looking at it, in two thousand and one, they bought this property. They bought lot seventy-seven and lot
Stop, 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 stop. So stop on that. So I think this illustrates what, what the chair is about to say. So they purchased lots fifty and fifty-one on Rose Point Avenue. Subsequently, about ten or eleven years later, they put, purchased the subject property, which is lot seventy-five and seventy-six, which fronts on what's now Marine Avenue.
So where is the house? On what lot?
So the, the house we located
That house right now? Which lot they own? Just tell me which lot they own.
Fifty and fifty-one.
They own fifty and fifty-one and they own seventy-five and seventy-six. The existing, their existing home is actually fronts on Rose Point Avenue. It's fifty and fifty-one. Where they're proposing to to build is, is about in here. It's mostly really on, on seventy-five, but but obviously utilizing lot seventy-six as well. So it's in this vicinity. Their existing house is in this vicinity on fifty and fifty-one. So as you can see in terms of proximity, it does give Mrs. Heavy, Heavy that proximity to, you know, look after her sister and that, and that's her thinking behind it. And as I said, we are, we're not proposing. It's a modest house. We're proposing two bedrooms. We're not proposing to look for variance for
Go back to the plan. So come back, bear with me. The house now is on fifty and fifty-one?
Right. So the house now is on fifty and fifty-one. That's where the Hevys live right now. It's
And they bought, they bought seventy-five and seventy-six?
Subsequently, correct. That's correct. Right. That's what happened. And so so seventy-five, I'm sorry.
Let me, let me, let me help you out with something. The tradition of this board don't like to give variances, but I gotta help you out with something and maybe the commissioner agrees with me. If the applicant sells seventy-six, or David, you with me?
Yeah, I am.
If the applicant sell lot seventy-six to a trust and goes out, seeks a building permit on lot seventy-five, that lot in seventy-five is not in contiguous ownership.
They still have a contiguous point. Seventy-five and fifty still have a common point.
A point does not count. You need to have a line.
It doesn't merge if they connect at one point. So once a merger happens, the lot seventy-six would be so it would, it would be incorrect. It's actually an unlawful conveyance. So once, once the merger happens, it, it, it can't be reversed without a variance. So it's, it's essentially rendered unbuildable from that, from that moment on.
I, I think that there's two. I'm thinking out loud a little bit here and it's not something I've actually talked to my, to my clients about. But there's two issues in terms of the merger theory. One is that if the lots merge and they're substandard and now you don't have that grandfather provision. Then I believe the law is, well, okay, you can't get a building permit. Because now you're not meeting the area requirement, you're not meeting the frontage requirement. However, I don't know that there's anything that in terms of conveyancing law, which prevents you from conveying a piece out. I don't know. I haven't, I hadn't really thought along those lines. That's an interesting
I've, I've been through this a little bit, if I may, through the, through the chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Jimmy.
So I had, I had a very similar but different situation forty years ago. Maybe more, maybe fifty years ago, when my mother and father bought two lots and put a house on both lots and lived there for a long time. And the lot next door, which was a buildable lot, was owned by somebody different and it was buildable because it was owned by somebody different and it was grandfathered. And the plans of the owner, not my parents, the owner, the plans were for him to build his retirement home there. And my dad said to him, well, if you ever decide to retire anywhere else, I'll buy it and I'll put my little retirement home and sell this monster that I raised this bird of kids in. And I'll move right next door. I'll stay in the neighborhood. And several years later, the guy called him up and said, Lou, I'll sell you the lot. I'm gonna go to Canada. And my dad bought it. And the law is, when you are non-conforming, you will combine and continue to combine until you conform. And once it's been transferred, tough taffy, the rules that say you go to a lawyer and have him check off all these things, if it says, if it was ever owned in common, if ever owned in common, it becomes, so in that instance, they lost the ability to build that and they had to go to Florida because they couldn't afford to stay in Massachusetts under those conditions. That's, that's, that's a old story. And the same thing applies here. You can't make a lot less conforming. So the only thing that I can see, and it's a terrible law, because if anybody else other than the Hevys, other than the Hevys and the people that own lot seventy-seven or forty-nine or forty-eight and if anybody else in the world bought that, the grandfathering would continue and they could build on it. It would become a grandfathered buildable lot. So now the neighbor buys the lot and they can't build on it. So by buying the land next door, they make it less valuable. It's a stupid rule, but it's the rule. So the only thing I think might happen is put it all under one deed and put two houses under one deed and say they can never be separately sold and maybe we could help them that way. I'd have to talk to, let Dave chime in on that, but
You can't. You need the square footage of the land. You don't have it. You could put addition.
What if you connected them?
You connect them, not on, I mean, they could have an in-law. It depends on, and when it comes before us, like accessory apartment. We'll see at that, at that moment, how's that go? Let me, let me pass it, let me, let's, let's hear from the other board members. We're running out of time. And this one, okay, Mr. Sample. Okay, which one is this one? Okay, this is, okay, this one will have Chris saying on that. Okay, Chris, what do you think?
I, I guess I'm not sure. It's the, the first time I've ever, I guess, seen this. So, so I, I don't have many questions right now, I guess.
Veronica?
I think it's a lousy situation. I would like to help them out. I just don't know how to do that.
Well, you'd be creating unlawful you'd be breaking the rules hardly if you do.
Well, that's why we're seeking, that's why we're seeking the variance. We'd be breaking the rules if we just stuck the house up there, that's for sure.
I, I understand and, and I have to say, we, the board, the zoning board can break the rules and create the variance, but we're not and this matters, we don't really like to do that. But let's hear the rest of the board. Jimmy, you made your comment. Chris, Mr. Sample, you wanna make a comment?
This time.
Nothing. Jake?
I just think we might need to dig a little bit deeper, maybe have them come back and do a little more, look a little more into this.
Okay, in the audience, anyone wanna speak in favor of this matter? I hear none. Anyone? Yes?
Bob Blair, I live at Ten Barlow Ave on Rose Point. Just like, like to offer my support for the request. I believe that the Heelys currently have one of the nicest properties on Rose Point and I think anything they put up would only enhance the neighborhood. So I would just like to offer that.
And I'm sure they will, but once we start this, look how many lots are unbuildable and then what we do, we have to be consistent. But thank you for your comment. Anyone else wanna speak in favor of that? Anyone in favor? I hear none. I would like to close. Before we close, counselor, you wanna add something?
Well, I just would like to emphasize again, taking up the point that Mr. Blair mentioned, that certainly, one of the other issues, of course, for the zoning board is this is something that is in keeping with the neighborhood. I think that it is. And again, they are proposing to put up a house that's consistent and you know, with, with the Rose Point neighborhood. It's, it's a nice project. There really is a hardship associated with, you know, with this as well. So that's all I would add.
All right, let me, let me just, I got another legal vote. Just let's get a little, Veronica, how you feel about the variance?
I would like to grant it, honestly. I mean, or, or come to some kind of solution. Is, so is the, is the lot currently now conforming? I guess that would be where we'd start with, with, with all setbacks and whatever.
Okay, before I go, I see Mrs. Slaven would like to speak, the chairman of the conservation. Yes, Madam Slaven?
Oh, no, nothing to do with conservation. Thank you. Nazee, I have a question. Is this lot sewed? Does it have a stub?
Well, I'm sure if it doesn't, that could happen.
Okay, just
You know what I'm saying? But there is sewer there. There's definitely sewer in that area.
I know, but not all unbuildable lots were not giving a stub.
Has water and sewer to the, to the lot right now.
There is. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And speaking of the, there is actually an order of conditions approving the, the project from the Conservation Commission.
And Jake, how do you feel about it?
Like I said, you know, before I make a decision, I'd probably like to look a little bit more into this.
Okay, Jim, how you feel about it?
I'd, I'd like, I'd like to suggest that we encourage the board members to take a ride out to Rose Point and take a look at this. I, I'll, I'll tell you how I feel about it. I think it's, I think it's a terrible rule that, that that a few billion people in the world could buy this lot and it would be deemed grandfathered and buildable. But if the neighbor buys it, it's, it's deemed non-buildable. So I do find it to be a terrible rule. But unfortunately, it, it's a rule that could easily be challenged and all we need is one person within the twenty days to challenge it and it's out the window and, and, and there's that precedent thing. I mean, I, I can tell you how badly myself and my parents and my family were when it happened to my family. So obviously, I'd like to grant relief, but I don't know if we're able to. So I'd really like everybody on the board to take a ride by and, and see before they vote tonight. I'd like to continue.
Okay, very good. Chris, how do you feel about that?
I feel the same as Mr. Akabachi. Is there, is there any way they could put it in a trust? Did we talk about that, a trust?
Let the counselor, it's too late now. Too late now. They own it. Too late. Go ahead, go ahead.
Mrs. Slaven's comments made me think about, they were sewer and water bediments in Rose Point. Were those bediments paid on these lots?
Yes.
Okay. All right, very good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just for the record, I did, I did drive down there as if I do for every one of these petitions that are front. I make a point of going out and seeing each and every one of them for the customer, for the, for the public. Because I think as a board member, I need to be prepared and ready. These people pay money and wait a long time to get this hearing. So I have gone out and seen it.
That's why I saw you today. I thought I saw you. So you're good with it? You're okay with it? You like it? You like the idea?
I I like the idea, but again, once that lot got shed, I I don't know how this is gonna be handled.
Okay.
I mean, once they brought the two lots together, I I, you know, we've been talking about it, so.
Right.
Can I, um, make a comment?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think, um, this is, um, not necessarily a typical situation because of the betterments, um.
No, I disagree, Veronica. Excuse me, Nazzy, but I disagree because, again, if any of the other several billion people in the world bought this. That you they didn't need that rise or they didn't needed that water because it would have been a grandfathered buildable lot. The only people that can't build here are the Heelys.
Easy.
Right, right. But I do feel like the fact that they've paid the betterments on the property, um. And and I know, I know you're shaking your head, but I've. So there are other lots, a lot of times like taxes are also, it's probably been taxed as a buildable lot. And there's a lot of other situations that have happened. Um, I know the only thing I was gonna say about this is. In terms of setting a precedent, um. I don't know necessarily, um. I I think I would like.
Get an abatement.
They could get their money back on the on the, um.
I believe so. I'm not sure, but but like I said, and like Richard mentioned, very important. I mean, it is, unfortunately, it is what it is. But for the sake for the applicants and the request for the, uh, Jim, let's take our drive there and. And we we'll we'll go on next week. So let's make, can we get a motion to continue? We have a motion to continue by Jim. Do I have a second to continue till the twenty eighth?
I second.
Second with Chris. All in favor, say aye, Chris.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Please, everybody take a right there. I will see you on the twenty eighth, counselor and Mr. and Mrs. Healy. Thank you.
That be at the, uh, the six, uh, six thirty as well, or will you let us know?
Time you'll be in the agenda, but you could look at the agenda, see what time is your turn and guess.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next one, fourteen dash twenty-one, Leo's Harbor Trust, one ninety-seven onset.
The zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one at six thirty P M. To consider petition number fourteen twenty-one for a special permit and or variance. From the requirements of Article Six, Section six twenty-two under the Wareham zoning bylaws. To Leo's Harbor Lights Realty Trust, Leonard Cabelas, trustee care of G A F Engineering. Of two sixty-six Main Street, Wareham, Mass, to permit an existing rear egress deck located at one ninety-seven Onset Avenue. Onset Mass, Accessory Map One Lot, one thousand and one in the O V one zoning district.
Okay, very well. Who's presenting that case?
Now, see, this is Len Len Cabelas. Uh, I'll I'll make the introduction and then.
You don't mind, Len, just address me as a chairman, because I know I know you, but. If you don't mind.
Please, uh, chairman, um, Len Cabelas here is the applicant. I'm joined by my sister Jamie Souza, uh, who's the manager of the of the property and Bob Rogers from G A F Engineering. Um, who's prepared the the engineered drawings and identified the the encroachment. Yeah, um, if if I may, just a brief introduction and then turn it over to the bar. Um, the, uh, the situation here was, uh, during during the summer, uh, there was a situation that, uh. Uh, some tenants were moving, uh, furniture inside or or out of the, uh, building. Um, there's a rear set of stairs, that rear set of stairs, um, had, uh, had been damaged. Um, Joyce had had broken and.
We've watched you, Len.
Maybe Bob can finish it up.
Oh, we're time for a battery to die.
Let Mr. Brian Rogers.
I was chairing Bob Rogers, G A F Engineering. Um, I don't know if Ken could, uh, bring up the plan. Um, in in my letter, uh, with the application, I went into a little bit of a detail. And so, um. We're only going closer to the property line with the town property, um, by two point nine feet. And so as Mr. Cabelas was trying to explain, the the prior stairs lined up on that existing deck. The prior stairs lined up with those electrical meters. And the electrical meters were being damaged by people going up and down the stairs. Uh, moving furniture in and out of the residential units and there was some disrepair. And so, uh, you can see that the existing deck is seven point nine feet off of the town property line. Uh, so with, there's no, um, there's no other residents at, uh, a budding on that property line. It's it's town of Wareham. It's it's the, uh, the bandstand property. And so, um, we feel strongly that, um, that this is not a, uh. An increase in detrimental, it's not a substantial detriment to the neighborhood. Um, it solved a safety issue and a and a, you know, maintenance issue with the meters. It's only two point nine feet closer to a property line that does not have an a butter. And so we respectfully request that you, uh, grant the relief as a special permit.
Okay, so it is an existent nonconforming, a nonconforming, Bob, you saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, let's pass that. We'll stop by Jim.
It doesn't look like it's detrimental to the neighborhood. It's not blocking anybody's view. It's not making anybody else's property less usable or it's not a. I just don't see it being a problem. Uh, I see why. I see where the electrical meters are. I see what they did. I I don't have a problem with this.
Okay, this one, Mr. Sample was set on this. Uh, Richard, what do you think?
Questions at this time.
No question. Jake?
Um, I don't see any problem with this project.
Veronica.
I don't have any questions.
Uh, Chris, you can have some input.
I I don't see any problems with this either.
Okay, anyone in the audience wanna speak in favor, in the public? I hear none. Anyone in the public wanna speak against? I hear none. If I don't hear, if none is this, I would like to move to close.
Jim Akabachi, so moved.
I have a second to close.
Second, Jacob Morrison.
Okay, all in favor, say aye, Jake.
Aye.
Uh, Richard?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Uh, Jim?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, what's the wishes now?
I make a motion to approve as presented standard conditions, grant relief.
Okay, so you wanna treat that as a special permit first?
Uh, I'm sorry, yes. I make a motion that it's treated as a special permit because it's non-detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay, any discussion? I hear none. I have a second.
Second, Jacob Morrison.
By Jake, all in favor, say aye, Jake.
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Wishes now.
Make a motion to grant a special permit as discussed prior.
And with the standard conditions.
Correct.
Okay, do I have a second for that motion?
Second, Richard Sepple.
Second, by Richard. All in favor, say aye, Richard?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Uh, Jim?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it's Gary. Thank you, Bob, and thank you.
You all.
Jamie?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Len, and Mr. Cabelas, and see you hopefully sometime.
I recall when this applicant was in front of this board before and there was neighbors that were concerned about their view and. I recall that he was accommodating and changed his plans quite considerably, so it was easy for me to say yay this evening.
That's true. That's true. Thank you.
Thank you.
What happened here?
Thank you.
Oh, you guys gotta end with me. I did something here.
We can hear you, Nazzy.
I know I did something. All right, fifteen dash twenty-one, Rachel. Solomon, Nine Prospect Ave, Kenny?
The zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one at six thirty P M to consider petition number. Fifteen dash twenty-one for variance from the requirements of Article Six, Table six twenty-five and Article thirteen, Section thirteen sixty-one under the Wareham zoning bylaws. Rachel Solom, care of J C Engineering Incorporated of two eight, two eight five four Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. To raise and reconstruct a pre-existing nonconforming accessory structure located at Nine Prospect Avenue, Onset Mass. Since there's map one lots seventy and eighty in the O V two zoning district.
Okay, who's, uh, Mrs. Solomon?
Good evening, Brad Bertolo with J C Engineering on behalf of the property owner.
Okay. Uh, Mrs. Solomon, wanna tell us quick what you're trying to do?
I have, uh, this accessory building, which I think was built as a garage and is now, uh, was described by. The town as a two-bedroom house. It's really only a one-bedroom house. And it's all, it's built on ground and it's rotten around the base and I need to tear it down, um, and rebuild it. I'd like to rebuild it. We have two lots. I was very interested in the discussion of the two lot of the, you know. Single owner of several lots and how that limits our building abilities. Um, but this has existed, you know, as a single owner for two lots for a long time. So anyway, um, the. What I have changed, and I don't know that you had this information from the original plans, we. Recognize that the setback is is five feet, so we're gonna be moving the house another foot and a half to comply with that setback. Um, and I, and the other, and and it's gonna be a one-bedroom house, it's pretty much the same square footage as it is now. And because the deck is also rotting, we'll be rebuilding the deck. Um, another addition that I notified the architect of is that I want a permeable surface for the driveway, so the asphalt that is there now will be removed. In the excavation process. So we'll be increasing permeable surface on the property.
All right, I would like to get the deal from Mr. Bertolo. Go ahead, Brad.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, if I may, I will, uh, share my screen.
Yeah.
Again, this property is located at Nine Prospect Avenue, situated in a residential district, Onset Village. Uh, residential O V two currently contains a, uh, single-family dwelling, uh, deck. And accessory structures all, uh, relevant to, uh, single-family use. The application or this plan or the plan prior was submitted to the commissioner for his interpretation. And he has requested that two variances were necessary. Uh, as Mrs. Solomon had said, uh, we are relocating, uh. The proposed accessory structure in a new location that will allow for a greater setback from the property line.
All right, what are you relocating? Just show us.
Yeah, I'll, uh, I'm gonna actually go through some pictures, uh, as well. So what's shown in bold is the new footprint of the structure.
Yeah.
Uh, what's shaded in, uh, gray hatch is the existing footprint. Currently, it's about. Three point seven feet from the side property line where accessory structures need to be at least five feet. So we are proposing to relocate that dwelling. Let me just go through some pictures and it'll, uh. Be a little easier to to understand.
Well, while you're getting your pictures, Brad, um, through the chair, if I may.
Sure.
The plans we're looking at talks about a two-bedroom structure. Are there any plumbing facilities in this structure?
Yes.
There's there's a bathroom facility in there.
Okay.
So if I, uh, may continue.
Go ahead.
All right, so this is the, uh, main residence. There are no, uh, anticipated changes, uh, on this project. Uh, this is the, uh, deck and the structure that is anticipated to be removed. As you can see, uh, the deck, the the floor, the the main structure sits real low to the ground. You actually step down off the deck into the the structure. This is a view from, uh, the other direction, uh, standing out on Pleasant Avenue. Uh, looking at the deck and the side of the structure. Again, as you can tell, the structure is just a few feet off the side property line and relatively low to the ground. So as part of the project, we're looking to. Rebuild this structure, correct some grading issues, so, uh, have proper drainage away from the structure. Uh, at the same time, we're relocating the structure and building it in conformance with the requirements under the accessory uses. A minimum of five feet off of the setback of the property line and a. No higher than twenty feet. Currently, the structure is about twelve, little over twelve feet. To, uh, the ridge and we're proposing about a five-foot increase. Uh, greater, uh, roof pitch to allow for some vaulted ceilings. And some additional windows to provide some more light for this, uh, new, uh, living space. It's not a separate dwelling unit. It's just more habitable space. As part of the variance request, uh, we are increasing a floor area. On this property due to the increase in size of this structure. We are relocating it approximately a foot and a half from the property line, but we'd also like to expand it by two feet. Uh, the location would, uh, kind of come right up to the existing. Uh, path in this in this location here. Uh, because this lot is only about seventy-five hundred square feet, the maximum. Floor area, uh, ratio that's allowed is fifteen hundred square feet. Currently, uh, there's tw- almost twenty-six hundred square feet, so. Currently, it's a nonconforming in regards to, uh, the floor area ratio. In regards, uh, uh. Referencing back to the commissioner's letter, he talks about, uh. Structures other than one and two-family dwellings and I could understand that this is being an accessory structure. I I think it's a pertinent to a residential use. And and could classify as, uh, requiring a special permit where we are. Uh, increasing in existing nonconformity, but it's the the board's, uh, position to determine if. That increase is substantial and would require variance. In either case, we're asking for a variance for this this proposal. Uh, also, we are looking to expand the deck by squaring off the deck. As you can tell, uh, is kind of, there's an angle in this location here and it, uh, squares off at this point. Let me just go back to the site plan just to get a better view. Again, this is the location of the proposed deck expansion. Uh, this is considered building footprint. Uh, and again, this lot is currently over in regards to building coverage. Again, this is, uh, a maximum of twenty percent is allowed, fifteen hundred square feet according to the lot size. Uh, and currently we have, uh, actually, we have about twenty-six hundred square feet as well, twenty-five eighty-eight. Uh, which is about thirty-four percent. We are increasing it or proposing to increase it by approximately. The addition of this. Uh, deck and the expansion of this, uh, structure to increase it by approximately one point nine percent, one point eight percent. Uh, it it's about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty square feet increase. As you can see, uh, this lot is very small, very consistent with, uh, neighboring lots. We fortunately have a, uh, double lot in this situation, uh, similar with the lots in this neighborhood. Uh, footprints and house sizes are comparable. A lot of them are oversized. Uh, based on today's bylaw, uh, some areas, uh, further down the street, uh, they're almost a hundred percent floor area ratio. Um, just based on the size of the house versus the size of the lot. Uh, what we're proposing here is, uh, just a minimal increase and we feel that, uh, because. The size of the lot and how it's already over the minimal requirements. Uh, be a hardship, uh, if this wasn't, uh, approved, because the the property owner can't really do any. Uh, modifications to their dwelling to, uh, use their property. Um, also, we we feel it wouldn't be a detriment to the neighborhood. Let me just show you some pictures. As you can see in this view here, the expansion is going into the side yard. There's currently fences that block the neighbors. Structures up close to the property line that really wouldn't have a a view of that expansion. Looking in the other direction here. The proposed deck's not going to get any closer to the side property line and still still meets say setback greater than ten, ten feet. It wouldn't impact any views from across the street as it's just taking up in this same area and anticipated to have a similar railing system on the property. Just go through a couple more pictures on the site here. Again, from the other direction, there's solid privacy fences. So the expansion that's in this location right here, it would not be visible to the neighbors. So we feel that the posed expansion, even though it's an intensification of a lot coverage, would actually not be detrimental to the neighborhood and this project would be allowed to be have a variance granted for this project. If the board has any questions on the project, I'd be more than happy to answer.
All right, very well.
I can keep the plan up or if you want me to take it down.
You're not just take it down. So we have this, the all the board. Okay. Clearly, it's because it's an accessory structure, it's a variance. We cannot grant you a special permit. In my views, it does meet statute requirement for a variance. You have the hardship. Apparently, the way this the house sits on the lot as well as the deck and it is unique. And it doesn't delegate from the intent of the bylaw. That's my opinion. I'm gonna start with Veronica. Veronica.
I agree with everything that you just said.
Okay. Second, this is Mr. Contis and on this Richard. What do you think?
Richard.
I I I just I'm a little naive on this. If a deck is connecting a house and they have two lots and they're gonna tear down, they're gonna tear down the garage and move it. Does that nullify them of being coming up to code? I guess I'm kind of confused, but we just had that last family down a Rose Point. It seems to me so if they connected those two houses with a deck, would that become unnecessarily also?
That that it's an accessory structure, right? Brad, are they creating a second dwelling?
No, it's just just rebuilding what's there currently.
But they're but they're tearing it down. So once you tear it down, once you tear it down, you have to come to code. And if this a code allow
Richard, let me explain to you. If you tear it down and put exactly rebuild it on the same footprint, you need a simple special permit because they move in it and it's accessory accessory structure. It needs a variance. If it was a house, we could say we could give them a relief as a special permit because existing nonconforming. And but the existing nonconforming does not extend to accessory structure. It's a little confusing, but that's how it is. You know what I'm saying? So but did you get it a little bit?
Yeah, a little bit. I just I'm confused between an accessory building and addition and a house.
Right. Let me pass it to Commissioner and he'll explain it better. David. David, unmute yourself.
I apologize, Mr. Chair. So the special permit protection only transfers to single or two family residential buildings, not to what we call other structures. This would not be a single or two family residential building because it's not attached to a conditioned space and it doesn't criteria for a dwelling unit. So it's other structures, a non-single or two family, and it's not entitled to special permit protection.
That answer your question, Richard?
Thank you, David.
Okay.
So just top topic, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I think the key words were conditioned space. So if they built a three, four foot wide hallway between the house and the two bedroom structure, it would be considered one struck, one house.
Correct. That's true.
And then it would change all the rules.
But change all those, then that's it could it could be a special permit if we see fit. Who I didn't Jake, what do you think?
Um, I don't really see anything right now.
All right. Did I ask you Veronica? Okay, I did.
I would just like to hear from the public. That's all.
We have, and this one Chris Contis and on Chris, you comment.
So in this building, it's what just two bedrooms and a bathroom? Is that what's in this building?
Pretty much. It's really only one bedroom and open space and a bathroom.
That's my only question. Thanks.
Okay, I want to go to the public. Anyone want to speak in favor of this project? I hear none. Anyone anyone want to speak against this project?
Yes.
Yes, who's just Grace, Mrs. Hartley? Yes.
Currently fifteen Pleasant Avenue. My primary concern is I've I've worked very hard to increase the value of my home here. And I have a water view as it is. So my primary concern is if this building is moved to my right as I'm looking at it, I would be heartbroken to lose my water view and that would decrease the value of my home. A secondary concern that I and other neighbors have had, I have actually have another neighbor here next to me is increased traffic on our street, which is already quite congested, more so in the summer, particularly at that house in the summer. It's it's very loud and it feels like, you know, to an outsider, it feels like trying to build another house on the street as opposed to a house let as it was presented. So that's a concern. We're already very congested. For me, it's the view, but I'm gonna let I have another abutter here who would like to speak.
Okay, who's who's the second one?
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Perry. I live at ten Pleasant Avenue, right next to the proposed new house. My concern is I was ending the impression as a moratorium on sewage hookups. So I'm just concerned if it's going to be a whole house. Already, we seem to have the smell and I I don't know. There's a definite odor and I was just wondering if the bathroom now was ever properly installed and if we're gonna have another house that's larger on top of that. I'm just real concerned about the, you know, the the situation with the bathroom facilities. And also the parking, like I said, it's it's just going to be a nightmare for the parking.
All right. So I I the way I hear it right now, I mean, correct me, Brad, if I'm wrong. So people have concerns that this is turning to a second dwelling. So what do you have to answer with Mr. Solomon?
That's absolutely not the case. It's just maintaining the use on this property. We're not turning it into a second dwelling unit that has kitchen and facilities. This is an existing dwelling unit, existing accessory unit
Structure, yeah.
A structure that has happens to have living space and a bedroom and a bathroom facility. Again, we're not increasing flow. We're not adding bedrooms. It's 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 a similar structure that is there today. We just happen to want to rebuild it just because of how close it is to the property line, how close it is to the ground. And same time, you know, we're relocating it a couple feet away from the property line to eliminate an existing nonconformity.
Okay, regarding people who has concern about sewer, I don't sewer is not our jurisdiction. So we're not going to be able to answer this. The smell, like you said, the smell, maybe that's a plumbing issue. You gotta call the border house on that. I do see the hardship on this and regarding the Mrs. Hartley for the view, I want to pass to Jim. Jim always have a good theory on the on the view. Jimmy.
Well, my opinion on the view is is consistent and remains the same. If Grace Hartley has a or if the applicant Rachel Solomon Solomon, I'm sorry, ma'am, I ruined your name. Mine's so easy. I don't know why people can't have easy names like mine. But my my position is that if the applicant has a deed restriction that restricts her from blocking somebody's view, absolutely, it can't be blocked. If Grace Hartley has in her deed a view easement across Mrs. Solomon's property, then absolutely it can't be blocked. But if there's nothing in either of their deeds that has anything to do with views, it has nothing to do with our decision. That said, when Brad showed the when Mr. Bertolo showed the pictures, I didn't feel so anybody's view was going to be impaired by this change.
If I if I could cut in?
Go ahead.
I'm I forget the name of the abutter, but if I could post some pictures, I I fully anticipated how this might impact views in the neighborhood. And if I could get some clarification and show additional pictures.
Make as quick as possible, please.
I think you already showed the pictures and it did show. I I was satisfied nonetheless that it didn't, but.
Is the property owner that spoke the house, this house across the street?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. So I I I stayed on your sidewalk, but I stood in front of your dwelling to verify how it would impact your windows of your view. So I didn't go up to your house, but standing on your sidewalk, I'll show a couple of pictures and where I was standing at the time. Let me just get through this group here. I have a set of three pictures here in a row. This picture here is standing on the sidewalk at your front door. Bear in mind, we obviously have no leaves on the trees. The structure itself, yes, is moving to the right, but it's moving up to the side of the sidewalk. So I I don't see it impacting your view from your front door. This picture right here. This picture right here is standing in front of your window as far towards, I guess, onset app as possible. Current garage will slide. It will current proposed footprint is about in this location. Again, this is as far to the right as possible in front of the sidewalk.
Okay, these are good enough. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Good enough. All right.
Anybody else?
Anyone else want to speak against?
Or in favor?
Okay, I hear none. I mean.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Yes, go ahead. Karen, it's yours. Karen, can you hear us?
I think people may have troubles knowing how to unmute themselves. It's in the top right hand corner of your window.
Who's got kids screaming, Jimmy? All right, Karen.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Jose Gonzalez from number eight Pleasant Avenue.
Yes.
And my concern is the parking. Are we gonna lose? Are they gonna lose parking on their driveway? Right now, they park four cars in the driveway.
No, they're not gonna lose any parking. It's not impacting their parking.
Okay.
Thank you. Karen, are you still there?
Yes.
Okay, state what you want to say.
Oh, no.
All right, we can't hear Karen. All right, anyone else want to speak against this project? I hear none. Let's move to close, please.
You're moved.
I have a motion to close. Jim, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Veronica. All in favor, say aye, Veronica.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
And myself, I closed. Any discussion? I hear nothing. My wishes, it's 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 a variance. All which it's not a relief to a special permit. If you feel there's a hardship, which I think it does meet statute requirement of a hardship. So you're gonna make a motion to grant it to grant the variance. So what's the wishes?
I think I think do we have one, just one thing? Is it just a variance on the floor area ratio? Or do we also have to give them permission to raise and reconstruct?
No, it's the variance will cover it all. We do variance as presented.
So I'm so I'm so I move to grant a variance.
As presented.
As proposed on the plan drawn by Churchill Engineering. I don't have the date on it.
Three ten two thousand twenty one.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Veronica. All in favor, say aye, Veronica.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
This one is Chris.
Aye.
Jake?
No.
Jake is a no and I'm a yes. So it's four, one, zero, a carriage. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sixteen dash twenty one Wareham Historical Society, one twenty four Main Street.
The zoning board of appeals will hold an online public hearing on April fourteenth, twenty twenty one at six thirty PM to consider petition number sixteen twenty one for variance from the requirements of Article six, table six twenty four under the Wareham zoning bylaws to the Wareham Historical Society care of Angela Dunham of four ninety five Main Street, Wareham, Mass. To create an undersized lot located at one twenty four Main Street, Wareham, Mass. Assessors map forty seven one, 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 eight dash BB in the institutional zoning district.
Okay, who's presenting the Wareham Historical?
I am as president of the Wareham Historical Society. My name is Angela Dunham.
Okay, address for the records? You could just stay there. You could put there. You could state the address of the of the
Of the actual property.
No, no, the Wareham Historical Society.
Wareham Historical Society maintains a post office box. It is for box two eleven.
Okay. Okay, state your case. Tell us what you guys doing.
The property, the house itself is the Captain John Kendrick Maritime Museum. It is one of five properties that the Wareham Historical Society maintains as public facility buildings. We have the property has been leased by the Historical Society. However, we are looking to purchase the property that is underneath the building. We own the building itself, which is a technicality because we don't own the land under it. There was a lease. I I can give you the historical information about it. It was built in seventeen forty five. The house was purchased by David from David Nye in seventeen seventy eight by Captain John Kendrick, a sea captain. In seventeen eighty seven, Captain Kendrick sailed on an exploratory voyage from which he never returned. He went to Japan. He was on a mission to China to trade furs for silks, tea and porcelain. In eighteen oh five, the house was sold to Asa and Howlett Swift. In the eighteen twenties, the house was occupied occupied by Sylvanus and Hannah Bourne. Sylvanus Bourne was a surveyor for the town of Wareham. And in nineteen thirty nine, Toby Hospital acquired the land from the trustee under the will of Alice Toby Jones. In the nineteen seventies, George Deekus, who was then the president of the Historical Society, negotiated for a lease of the property so that the house would not be destroyed or that it would not be demolished or moved in the early nineteen seventies. So in nineteen seventy three, I believe, no, seventy four, sorry. In January of nineteen seventy four, there was a lease agreement for thirty years. The lease agreement ended in two thousand four. And in two thousand four, Wareham Historical Society board members and its president at the time tried to negotiate to purchase the land under it or to extend the lease. And that was rejected at the time. When I came on board as president in two thousand thirteen, I then began began negotiations with South Coast Hospitals Group Incorporated. And they have recently agreed to allow us to purchase the property. However, the property needs to be separated out. In the documents that I submitted to to your board respectfully, when you look at the Um, when you look at the, the map that was subject, um, sorry, given to you, it is under one, 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 eight. B B and it's an L shaped piece and we're looking to take that crosshatched section. And to purchase it from South Coast so that we own the property under the building.
Okay, well, here's the deal. So you wanna, so South Coast are willing to sell you that piece?
Yes.
Okay. This, this board cannot create property line. You need to go to planning board and create that line. Then come back to us and we grant you a variance. It will be a permanent variance.
Can I, can I interject as well, Mr. Chair?
Sure, go ahead.
Going back to Rose Point and going back to earlier conversations. I'm not sure you can make a lot less conforming. I understand the Historical Society wants to protect themselves forever and a day. I understand South Coast Hospital doesn't want to continue to own it. I might suggest that they reconsider a ninety-nine year lease for the same price. As the um proposed purchase. That way they're not creating a new lot. A ninety-nine year lease is recorded at the Registry of Deeds. And they could um also grant. An option at the sole option of the lessee. The Historical Society to have another ninety-nine year option to renew for one dollar. That would just be my suggestion to make this a lot easier. I don't know if it's legal. I'm sure some guy that has a lot more. Knowledge of the law than me could maybe fine tune it, but that's my suggestions.
Mrs. Dunham, let me ask you a question. This lot you crossed, you made like little crosses, right?
Yes.
This is a part of one, one, eight B B?
Yes.
Of that big lot, right?
That's correct.
And, and they don't want to renew the lease. They want to sell it to you, you're saying?
They're offering to sell it. We had requested uh an extension of the lease. However, the negotiation fell far short of what would. We felt was in the Historical Society's best interests. The building itself, uh, anyone uh familiar with it can see. That it needs a great deal of uh work, a great deal of um, as we all know. Older properties need a great deal of maintenance. And so we're looking to separate it out and purchase. They've agreed to sell us. That piece of land under the building so that we can then get grant monies and um, take care of the building.
I understand. And that's obviously staying in a museum. It's not gonna turn to apartments or anything, right?
Correct.
Alright, my, my two cents for this project. I totally understand what Jim said, but I think this is. Unique and this is a museum. It's historical. It's not, the, the location of it and. I think we should go out of our way to help as much as we can. So my two, my, my suggestion. I'm gonna pass it by the board, see how they feel. You would go to the planning board, ask them to create a lot line. They're gonna tell you no. You're gonna tell them create it and make it a parcel. They might tell you to come back to us based on this to get a variance, then you go back to them. And we'll see what they say. So if they agrees to just create a lot, put a lot line. And they give you a miler and they sign it, you come back to us. I personally would be more than happy to grant the variance. They might say, go back, get the variance and come back to us and we'll give you the lot, the lot line. You're gonna need an engineer. To make the details of the line. Of the plan. It, it has to be engineered, it's a surveyor stamp and all. Before you go to planning board, oh, come back to us. So this is my two cents. I want to pass it to Veronica. Veronica, what do you think? And this one will be Richard Sample, send on that. Veronica, what do you think?
Um, I'm in agreement in the. Um, in what you said, that this is definitely unique. Um, it's a museum. It's, I think, you know, for the public good. But. So does the, you're, does the planning? Can, can they, can they make it a lot line? You're saying that they might just send her back to us and she's gonna be going back and forth.
Well, that could be, that could be difficult. Say, go back, get a variance and come back. Or they could say, sure, this is a lot line. It's, it doesn't mean anything.
Can I answer?
A variance is useless.
Can I interject, please?
No. Okay, I want to go, uh, I'm going uh to.
Well, can I, can I, one more question now?
Yes.
Um, so could we possibly grant with the conditions that it is divided? And.
We could do this. We could do that.
Okay.
We could do this. Okay, let's go to Mr. Sample. You okay, Richard?
I, yeah, I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Jake?
I agree with, with what you said, Ozzy.
Okay, very good. I'm gonna right now, uh, and Jim, Jim, go back to you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with it. We either, we either, you know, conditionally grant upon planning approval or. Whatever it takes. I agree with the sentiment that let's um, let's try to. Be uh positive in this action.
Right, the, the, the legal part of it, if we grant the variance, the problem has to specify a law. And this one, it doesn't have it. Now you don't have it. They need to go and create that one, one, eight B, you know what I'm saying? So now you're, you're granting variance for something doesn't exist. You know what I'm saying?
I do. That's, that's why I said that it's semantics, but there might be a proper way to do it.
The planning board had things like this before them. They know what to do. That, that came, that, that's, they had. I, I'm, I know of at least two occasions like this. So they create the line, make a parcel, they come back to us, get a variance. So because if they get a line, let's, let, let me explain to Mrs. Dunham. If they create the line for you. And it's a parcel, you go to register. If it doesn't have a variance, you will clash into a title search and all this. So it needs to have. You, you need to come back for a variance. So if we, we can take the extra time and ask a town council about it. Or the commissioner, if he's still awake. Is David still, David, do you have, do you have any comments on that?
I, I do. So um, the planning board can't create a non-conforming lot without a variance. That's the first thing. Number two is uh, this plan that I see before us uh is, is. It says the Wareham Planning Board on top of it and it's an A and R plan. So I don't know. Where it came from or if it's already been to the planning board, but I mean, that step may have already been completed.
Alright, let me talk to Mr. Chris. Mr. Chris, are you with the society?
No, I am with South Coast Hospitals Group. I can tell you that the plan that is submitted. Uh, although you, although I can't see it on my screen because there are um pictures on the screen. I'm looking at the plan on my other screen. It is a fully endorsed A and R plan by an engineer. It has not been submitted to the planning board at this point because the planning board cannot endorse this plan. Without the variance. But I can tell you that this board, uh, your board can grant the variance. Subject to the approval of the A and R plan being approved by the planning board of Wareham. And once this stamped plan is submitted and if this board was gonna vote in the affirmative. To grant the variance and the twenty day appeal period uh passes, we would submit this plan submitted by filing corp. To the town, have it endorsed, record it, and then we would convey the property for a dollar. To the Wareham Historical Society. But it can, it, it can be conditioned. You, your vote can be conditioned. That the A and R plan be approved by the town of Wareham Planning Department.
Okay, let me ask you something. But we don't have an A and R plan in front of us, uh, uh, on the package anyway. Do you have it somewhere?
This one that's on the screen does.
Ah, ah, okay, alright.
In the package, it's the last page. Maybe, I've got two, maybe you've got none.
Ah, alright, uh, where, where, where is the plan? Where is the A and R?
Did you pick a package up from?
I did, but.
It's the very last.
Oh, lot one, this one, okay, okay, alright. Oh, that's, okay. And this has already been stamped and all that?
It has been stamped. It has not yet been endorsed by the, the town.
Right.
Because we cannot have it endorsed by the town until this board takes action, either affirmatively or negatively. But if they were to vote affirmatively, we would submit the stamped plan to the town for endorsement. Record it, draft a deed, and then convey the property to the Wareham Historical Society. Then they could take advantage of getting all the grants that they can't. Take advantage of it.
But after us, you still have to go to planning board to get endorsed.
Uh, we wouldn't have to go to the, we wouldn't have to do a whole subdivision plan.
Right, A and R.
Yes, just as an A and R plan. Yes, correct.
I have a, I have a question if, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Just curious, the parcel ID forty-seven triple one eight eight, that's also owned by Toby Hospital? South Coast?
It looks like it.
Uh, I.
Access Toby Medical LLC.
No, no, that is not. That is, are you referring to the parcel that is uh?
It's got the other building. There's three buildings in a row. This is one of them. And there's, and there's the one in the middle and, yeah, that, that, that.
No, no, that is not.
That's owned by somebody, by others.
By someone else, correct.
By others, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh. Anyone in the public want to speak in favor of this project?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that's Bob Blair, I'm chairman of the Wareham Historic District Commission.
Okay.
This property is, the building. Is right now the most significant property that we have in the Narrows Historic District. And I appreciate any. Positive support that you offer, um, possibly a conditional. Variance or order of conditions, however you work that out, uh, would be most beneficial to the town.
Excellent, thank you. Who else would like to speak in favor?
I would. I'm, just, just like to say that our historical.
Name, name and address.
Oh, sorry, Grace Hartley, fifteen Pleasant Avenue. Um, the historic, the Historical Society is just a huge asset to our town. The, the buildings that. They do have um, and that are available to the public to visit are wonderful. And this is also a really unique and uh. Unique museum, which I think people don't get to experience. And so if the Historical Society had the ability to improve it. What a benefit to Wareham, downtown Wareham, all of us.
Exactly, absolutely. Uh, anyone else? Okay, I hear none. Let's move to close.
Don't move, by Jim Akabachi.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Veronica, all in favor, say aye. Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mr. Richard Sample?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It's closed. Any discussion? I hear none. Uh, motion on the, uh, on the variance?
Make a motion to grant a conditional variance based on all the. All the dominoes falling in a row so that this can happen. That's a pretty lousy motion, but you know what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, motion to grant a variance pending, I guess, uh, planning board approval of A and R.
Correct.
Hey, do I have a second on that?
I second Richard Sample.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye, Richard?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Myself, Naz, aye, a carriage. Thank you. Next item, seven, thank you, thank you very much for your work for the, for this museum. Thank you. Okay, seventeen dash twenty-one, uh, Bonnie Smith, fifty-three Swift Beach Road.
Uh, I know, I just want to let you guys know, I have to recuse myself from this because this is, this is my mother, so I can't vote on this.
Okay, thank you for letting us know. Okay, let's go.
An online public hearing on April fourteenth twenty twenty-one at six thirty P M to consider petition number. Seventeen dash twenty-one for a special permit from the requirements of Article three, table three twenty and section three forty point two. And Article fourteen, section fourteen sixty under the Wareham zoning bylaws. To Bonnie Smith of fifty-three Swift Beach Road, Wareham, Mass proposing to create a dog kennel located at fifty-three Swift Beach Road. Wareham, Mass, assessor's map fifty-six lot B dash two in the MR thirty zoning district.
Okay, for the record, Chris and Richard will be voting on that. Uh, Mrs. Mrs. Smith?
Yeah.
Yes, can you tell us what you're doing? Yeah, name and address first.
Bonnie Smith, fifty-three Swift Beach Road. Um, I foster dogs and I want to start to be able to. I, I have three now and I'd like to, I have more coming in, in and out all the time. So what I'd like to do is to be able to have more small dogs only um for hospice. I have dogs that, I, I have one now that came from the wool burn case a few years ago. And when I got her, she couldn't even walk. Now she's happy in walking, but you know, she's up there in age now. And I had to put one down the other day, unfortunately. But um, but that basically to give them, some of these dogs, when they get to the end of their lives, people just bring them to the shelters. I want to bring them and give, give them a good last bit of their life.
Okay, uh, Mrs. Miss, you keep these dogs inside, indoor?
Yes, they have a spot. They can go, um, so I have a fenced in yard. It's approximately, the um. Twenty by fifty and they have a doggy door that I can close at any time so they can go in and out when I'm home. And they, they really love it. Um, at night I leave it open. Cause some of them are a little bit older and when they gotta go, they gotta go. So I have a smaller, I, I have another fence. So I can close it in so they only have a small area just to pee at night. But during the day when I'm home, they can go out and run around. And there's two doggy houses outside. Plus they have a whole room in the, the back and they have the whole house to run around in.
But what, so what you, I don't see, the commissioner, I don't see your letter here. What, what, what's, what's the situation, what's she need? Maybe you could pull it. I don't have it in my package.
You don't have a letter?
Let, let me, I don't have one from him, from Mr. Requena, the commissioner. Here we go. Okay.
Here it is. It's on the screen.
Special permit, okay, you need a special permit because in your application doesn't specify what you're looking for.
She's under five eight, so she needs a special permit.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good. So you're asking for a special permit. Now, how many dogs you want to foster?
Um, so I have dogs come in and out. The most I've ever had is probably ten. But. I don't usually have that many and they're all small dogs. So the biggest one I think I had is thirty-five pounds. But usually they're between five and twenty.
Okay, so if, if, so if we, if the board decide to grant you a special permit, we're gonna put a limit on the weight, okay?
Yes, that'd be fine.
And, and we need a number. What's your number? How many dogs you would like to foster? We need five, seven, six, give me a number.
I would say ten, but I wouldn't always have that many. It's basically, I was trying to get a, what's called um, the hobby kennel license.
Right. Okay. Alright, let me start with Jim. Jim, what do you think?
Um, I, I, I looked on Google Earth and I looked at the map and I looked at the lot size. Uh, before I make too many comments, I'd want to know what the neighbors think about it. I heard ten, I heard twenty. I know, I can absolutely, absolutely tell you I could not endorse twenty dog. Um, application. I just, I just, in my heart, can't imagine somebody next, as close as you are to your neighbors with twenty dogs. Um, even ten seems to make me nervous. So I'd need to know the number, but before I say anything. I'd like to, I'd, I'd really like to know how the neighbors feel about it, how, how it's been in the past and how they feel about it going forward.
Alright, okay, Chris, what do you think?
Good with it.
Ma'am, yeah, Miss, Miss, Chris, what do you think?
I, I totally agree with um, Mr. Akabachi.
Okay, Richard.
Yeah, I agree with Jim Akabachi also.
Okay, Veronica.
So um, you said sometimes you've had up to ten. So I mean, you've had dogs there.
Yes, that's why I want to make it, you know, legal. So I don't, you know. So people know what's going on. Um, I don't care if they, you guys are welcome to come see the setup. You'd be pretty amazed.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'd like to hear from the neighbors as well. Yeah, so I'd like to hear from the neighbors as well.
Alright, let's go to the neighbors. Anyone in the public wanna speak in favor first of this project, favor? I hear none. Anyone wanna speak against? Anyone, neighbors, wanna speak against of this project? I also hear none. That's good.
So that's, that, that gives me great relief, because I, I know that she had to send written certified notice to the butters on either side of her, is that correct?
Yes. Plus behind me.
Plus the one behind you. I see it, I'm looking on the map right now, yep. And then, uh, then we have the new development, Littleton Drive, going in behind that.
I mean, I must show, if these, if these dogs want at the hospice, they're not allowed, they're probably sick, the poor thing, and tired.
No, they're not.
They're not loud and obnoxious, yeah? Alright.
I have one loud and obnoxious one, though, I do, but I keep them quiet.
Okay, good. Alright, uh, if, if I, if I don't hear any more discussion, can we move to close?
A so moved by Jim Akabachi.
Could I ask the applicant a question before we close?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, what, what weight limit would you be looking for?
Thirty-five pounds.
Thirty-five pounds, and I don't want anything, no, I, I can't, I think if I brought one big dog in, in, it would be like, it, it would be horrible. I couldn't handle any big dogs, there's enough little ones.
Okay, very good. Alright, so, uh, do I have a second to close?
Come on.
I second Richard Sample.
Second by Richard, all in favor to close, say aye, Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Jim?
I'm, I'm sorry, I get distracted. I'm gonna have to know what I'm voting on, I get head.
No, no, motion to close right now.
Thank you, I can, I'm aye.
Okay, Veronica?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it's closed. Any discussion? I hear none. Wishers on the board, now special permit, we could condition a special permit. So first, you can make a motion with the conditions, and you could say standard condition and put additional conditions.
I, I, I'll, I'll go ahead and start, but I hope that other members of the board will help me. I'll make a motion to grant a special permit, uh, limited to seven dogs, um, with, with a, you know, extended to ten under extreme circumstances, but not more than three months. And then back to seven, and no, no greater than thirty-five pounds per animal.
You said it, perfect.
We set a weight.
Alright, okay, do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye, Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye, it carries, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, guys.
Jake, wanna go back in, please? Eighteen dash twenty-one, the last one, Daniel Georgiana, forty-five Longwood Ave. And we're very sorry to keep you that late, but unfortunately, that's how it is.
We also hold an online public hearing on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, at six thirty P M, or later, to consider petition number eighteen twenty-one for a special permit variance from the requirements of Article Six, Table six twenty-two, and Table six twenty-eight, and Article thirteen, Section thirteen fifty-two, and Section thirteen fifty-three, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Daniel Georgiana of forty-five Nakata Avenue, Fairhaven, Mass, proposing construction of thirty-one point five, what, and, or is that thirty-one feet, five inches by twenty-three feet and five inches rear addition, located at forty-five Longwood Avenue, Wareham, Mass, Assessor's Map, one Lot six thirty, in the OV two zoning district.
Okay, very well, name and address for the record, and tell us what you're doing.
Daniel Georgiana, uh, forty-five Nakata Ave, Fairhaven, and we own the property at, um, forty-five, um, Longwood Ave, sorry. And our son David is gonna make the presentation for our application.
Okay.
He is the builder.
Alright, David.
Hello, how's everyone doing today's evening, besides tired?
Thank you. Alright, let's hear it.
Uh, we're actually proposing to, uh, put an addition on the backside of the cottage at forty-five Longwood. Um, and we will be close to the, uh, setbacks, so we're, uh, looking to get a variance for the, uh, the setback on the right side of the property. Um, and I believe that we're over, uh, coverage on the property as well, so we would, I'm not sure if that would fall into variance or, uh, special permit.
Okay, well, right now, you're having, right now, you're four feet from the setback, so you're existing non-conforming.
He wants to continue the four feet all the way.
Yeah, we'll just let it, try to carry that line, uh, straight back.
Right, the only thing I need to know in coverage, you know, what's the percentage of your coverage there?
Uh, what the existing is?
Yeah.
Figure that out really quick.
Let me dig out the, the thing, Inspector, let that.
Turn the letter, yeah, if you look at the letters.
Oh, on my original, uh, variance letter?
Looking for floor area, or are you looking for building coverage?
Alright.
Thirty-two point forty-eight to fifty-three point oh six.
Correct. Alright, so here's the deal, so you're looking for two variances, and, uh, a three variances, and one special permit if the board feels is not detrimental. So you're looking for a surface permit, surface variance, coverage variance, floor area variance, and, uh, uh, that, that one will be on the, and set, uh, sideline, uh, setback variance, which is could be on a special permit if the four, if the board feels it fits. So, uh, so let's start with the first one, like, explain to us some hardships on the, on the property, why would, should we grant you a bigger impervious area?
No, absolutely. Um, he, as you guys know, in that, in that particular neighborhood, um, the lots are very small. And, uh, we're looking to obviously increase the size of the cottage that's there now, that's a single bedroom. And my folks are looking to, uh, basically change the layout a little bit in the existing, which that bedroom would now be pushed into the back new addition. So it'd be creating two, two bedrooms off the back for my, uh, for my folks.
Alright, on the, on the coverage, I guess it's the same, I mean, uh.
Yeah, it's been, no.
It's, it's more of, uh, the, uh, the hardship, it's more for property than a people, than a person, so I do see that the hardship, I mean, on the, on the, damn, this law has to be changed in that area.
Yeah, it's really titled.
That whole neighborhood is, you, you, how do you say yes to one and not to another?
I know, and they working on it, believe it, believe me now, Commissioner and, uh, the town planner to change it for the next meeting. I'm, I'm gonna start by, Jim, what do you think of this?
Um, when I first looked at the Commissioner's letter, I said, my goodness, there. But then I looked at the plan, and I looked at the neighborhood, I looked at Google Earth, I drove the neighborhood. I'm, I'm okay with this request, the four, you know, the four foot is just along the side, that's not unusual there. Um, these people have gotten modern, they don't throw their dishwasher, water out the window anymore. So I don't think they're gonna get the neighbors wet. I'm, I'm okay with it, I'd, I'd be willing to vote in favor of this.
Uh, uh, Chris will be telling on this. Chris, what do you think?
Um, I'm also okay with this, I, I don't see, um, I guess, any issues. There's a few things, there's a little entry side door there with some concrete steps, um, are, are those all going away?
Yeah, those will be, uh, that'll be, uh, you know, kinda converted into the deck area, that'll be taken right off.
It looks like there was like some cement blocks that sort of shot out, is that?
Yeah, I'm not even, we're actually pretty puzzled on that, not sure what that is. But those blocks are about too high, and they're sitting on a small, uh, it looks like, maybe like a footing that someone might have tried to do long time ago, um, kinda makeshift. That's, uh, that'll get kinda knocked out of there with some sledgehammers and, and so forth.
Probably be nice for you not to have to step over that little existing foundation.
Yeah, absolutely, it's quite the shingetter.
I would buy there today, it'll definitely clean up your lot.
Oh, yeah, we'll definitely, uh, do some landscaping over there, too. The neighbors seem to be pretty happy with it. Uh, we did have some questions about heights, um, so I'm happy to answer anything like that.
Alright, Richard, do you have any comment on that?
Oh, I don't, I don't find it, uh, anymore detrimental than what's existing in the neighborhood now, I'm good with it.
Jake?
Um, looks good to me so far.
Veronica?
Um, I guess I'm kinda stuck with the three variances, and I, I'm not really hearing a hardship other than the other neighbors have, um, the, the village is crowded, I don't know. I, I would say, for the first one with the impervious surface, um, I would try and get with it, under the, after fifty percent, you're only three point oh six, so you at least go down one variance that you're requesting, um.
Would that be square footage of the, uh, existing, I mean, sorry, be proposed?
No.
The impervious service, surface that you're gonna be covering, you, there's a, there's an allowance of fifty percent. You currently have thirty-two, but you're gonna go to fifty-three point oh six. If you, it's, it's a very, very slight modification, then it's a one less variance that you're looking for.
Yeah, how would I go, what, what would be some of the, uh, ways of getting around that, or?
Make the building smaller.
That's pretty much what I was thinking.
Is impervious area, is that counting, uh, walkways and so, such as that? Is that everything, anything that water can't go through, is that what impervious means?
Yeah, I believe.
So if they had bricks that had sand in between them, is that pervious or impervious?
Per, pervious, the sand would be pervious.
Okay, so if their walkways weren't cement, if they were piece stone, that they'd be, they could get rid of it that way.
There you go.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, um, the driveway existing now is a, is just like a, like a stone driveway, nothing pervious. Um, and walkways too in the front, like, I mean, we could certainly change the walkway in the front if that was something as simple as that.
Alright, let me go to the public, is there anyone wanna speak in favor of this project? I hear none. Anyone wanna speak against this project?
Yes, I'd like to say a few words. I'm Jennifer Hickson, fifteen Fourth Street, uh, with twenty-five years. Um, and, uh, just bear with me, I know it's late, I appreciate your service, Mr. Chairman.
No problem.
Um, so, uh, I am at the rear of the building. Um, our relationship started, uh, very friendly, and, um, the new neighbors chose to cut down some of the very big trees, hundred-year-old trees in the back, which was fine, it was, uh, on their property, yet, um, it blocked. Uh, I would have said it would, um, really protected the backside of my house, both from shade and, uh, all sorts of other things. That actually made me get, uh, plot lines of my property, which I never had even thought about doing for twenty-five years. So when that happened, I found that the neighbor on the north side had built their fence, um, almost a foot onto my property. So I came to realize that I need to stand up for myself now, and who's going to help me? So I found out, um, by talking to the neighbor, that, that ten feet in the back isn't actually ten feet. It's ten feet in some places, and then smaller in the other on the real plants. So who watches over that? Who helps me? Who keeps this big towering house from, um, looking, uh, they said they were, cut the trees down so they could have a beautiful view. Is that a view of my outdoor shower, or what is that a view of? If you think about where Longwood is, it's a long way from the water. So, um, I'm here to speak in opposition, um, and ask for the help, um, to protect my twenty-five-year-old property, where I've just been living there as a good neighbor for a long time.
Right, now, is your fence, their fence is in your property?
No, it's.
Is, is their fence on your property, Ms. Hickson?
No, no, this is another neighbor, but that's what made me, I wouldn't have, I would have never even surveyed my property, because I wasn't doing anything.
Right, understand.
I didn't put up my own fence.
But you're gonna have, you're gonna ask them to move the fence, they have to move it on your property.
Uh, but the point, yes, sir, I understand, but the point is, now, all of a sudden, I realize that I have to watch out for myself a little more aggressively than just being a nice neighbor. Um, so that's why I'm here this evening.
So you are against the addition?
Uh, I wanna make sure that I have my ten feet. I think I'm against the height, um, of the addition. When I talked to the homeowner, she said four feet above the eaves, and then I think I find out it's four feet above the chimney. Uh, so I don't even understand how tall it's gonna be.
And now, Mr. Mr. Georgiana, Georgiana, how, how high is your addition?
Uh, the addition, uh, from the first floor to the ridge would be twenty-four foot seven. Uh, give or take a couple inches here or there.
From grade to the ridge?
Right.
Yes.
And the height there, I believe the maximum height's thirty-five feet, right?
Correct.
So they well on, Ms. Hickson, they well under the, the structure, they like ten feet below them. I mean, they could go another ten feet, so, so the height, yes.
There's a, there's a neighbor next door that is pushing that limit already.
Oh, yeah.
There's, there's a huge house next door to them, and I mean, huge.
That was a mistake, that was a mistake that was made thirty years ago.
Mrs. Hickson, you can speak until I, I give you the floor one other time. Uh, okay, so Mr. Sample said there's another house that's that high. Okay, now you can say what you wanna say.
Yeah, excuse me, sorry, I missed.
That's okay, we just gotta keep it in order, so it doesn't.
I know, understood, understood. Uh, so that when that house, uh, was built, that was an error, and they didn't allow them to occupy that third floor for a long time. That was thirty years ago, and that was a mistake, um, so we can't compare those two properties.
Right, but anyway, they are performing, but the heights, they are performing regardless, so it doesn't matter what. So what do you like to see these neighbors do?
Uh, so the first thing I asked is that whatever is allowed, me gets allowed, and that includes the entire ten feet. So.
Nazir, if I can, please.
Property is, is more than, ten, is less than ten feet from my property. Um, I would expect that to be taken care of.
Okay, Jimmy, go ahead, what do you wanna say?
I think, I think all Mrs. Hickson is asking for is that the plan that we're approving is drawn by an engineer or somebody that can put a stamp on it and say that ten feet is ten feet. I think that would answer her question.
So we've had it, we've had it surveyed.
One second, John. So, so you, you in the back, Mrs. Hickson?
Yes.
So you wanna make sure that ten feet is ten feet? Okay, we could restrict that and make sure it is, because they're gonna have to bring an ass, but then if it's not ten feet, after they do the foundation, they would, that will be, they cannot continue. Therefore, they get a cease and desist from the Commissioner and stops. We could, we could make that happen. Would that be satisfactory to you?
Um, uh, if that is the only protection that I can get, um, that I would appreciate. Uh, I object to the height hanging over the top of my yard, but if, uh, I can't have any grounds to object to that, I understand.
Alright, thank you. Who else would like to speak against this project?
Yes?
Yes, sir.
Uh, this is Paul Kilgore, we own twelve Fifth Street Onset, and we live in La Lona, Michigan.
Yeah.
Um, our objection is basically the fact that the house is too big for the lot. We understand the old house is big, but the house was one and a half, was less than one and a half stories high. And we have the same objection, we have the backyard directly behind that house. It'll look right into our kitchen windows, or upstairs bedroom windows into our backyard. And based on what you guys are saying is the house is too big for the lot, according to the zoning laws. I'd just like you to consider that. We did send a letter, so I don't know if that made it.
I'm sure it's somewhere in the package, but we had so many letters, I didn't see it.
So I don't, I mean.
Are you, are you, are you right in, in the back?
Yeah, the, the back went, back of the lot looks directly into my backyard.
Okay, and what, what are you, Mrs. Hickson, you in the back as well?
Uh, I, it looks directly into my backyard, too.
Yeah, she's behind us.
Okay, I wish I had a sight plan. So, but that's fifty feet, so you half and half, you have twenty-five feet, he has twenty-five?
Uh, I.
Kinda like that? Or, or so.
I think she might have more than, we, we have the back twenty feet maybe of our house, which is. the back twenty feet maybe of our house, which is the backyard, is where the, where that four-foot extension, if you would have driven four-foot extension, it would come right, right across the back of my house.
Okay, I get you. So, so that's the back of your, that's your backyard, and this is Mr. Hickson's backyard, so the addition looking back at your backyard.
Right. Right over the back. Right now, the house is thirty feet away, and it'll be ten feet away.
So what, so what would make you happy to say?
I'm, I, I'm not a architect. All I know is if it conformed to the regulations, I would be, you know, I wouldn't have an objection. That was the problem I had with the great big house next to us. We thought it was gonna conform with the zoning laws, and it didn't, and they built that big friggin' park back there. So I mean, my, my, my objection is basically if it follows what the zoning law says it is, which I assume is designed to kinda keep the, the neighborhood a- attractive and, and, and similar in style, I don't wanna just be a small little cottage in a bunch of McMansions.
No, we, we respect that as too. We, we also respect that. Uh, I did, we did design the house where we would have windows not overlooking, uh, very small, uh, up-high windows, so we're not looking down on anybody by any means. And also nothing, uh, no livable space upstairs.
All right, uh, anyone else wanna speak against?
Can I just ask a question, please? My name is Denise Hickson, uh, five Fenton Street, Hopkinton, Massachusetts.
Yes.
Uh, also I'm a property owner in the neighborhood. I've been, um, had many houses torn down around me and rebuilt. I, I just have a couple of questions. Number one, what is the, um, current height of the building, and what is the new proposed height of the, of the addition? And.
Twenty-four feet.
That's the new one, but what's the current height?
What's the current height, uh, John?
Uh, I, exactly, I couldn't say, but I would say it's probably, we have eight-foot walls, and then there's about a six-foot attic up there.
So you look at about fourteen, so that and about ten feet.
Okay, and is there any way to see like a, a drawing of what this is actually going to look like? I don't see anything online that, you know, so we could see architecturally what this style is going to be, how it might fit with the neighborhood?
Okay, Mr. Georgiana, you have, uh, do you have any architecture plans?
I have, uh, quite a few elevation drawings. I, I just don't have access to pull them up. I did send them, I did, I did send a full, full set in originally with the application.
I, I didn't receive anything in my packet.
I didn't either. I don't have it.
I did not either.
So I, I sent in a, a full set of plans, and then I also sent in, uh, what was specified for the, uh, the, uh, appeal applications as well, which, I'm not sure if they actually put the drawings in that application, nor.
Let me ask if Mr. Buckland can pull it out. Mr. Buckland, can you pull it out? Ken? I think it's gone.
I don't see it in the file.
I do have them here. I can hold them up for you.
That's.
All right.
I can show you some others.
Yeah.
That would be the rear of the house, with very limited windows.
Okay.
Is that a balcony?
Yes, ma'am.
How, how, how much does it extend this balcony, uh?
No, it's not, it's not, it doesn't stick out. It's flush. It's inside the roofline.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then I also have the side view as well, if you'd like. Excuse me, I'm unprofessional, holding up here.
You're doing a good job.
I appreciate that.
That's the other side.
Just, uh, I just wanna, I'm not trying to sugarcoat it for the neighbors. We are the, the, the planning, uh, the town planner, as well as the Commissioner, we're trying to revise that, uh, that bylaw there for coverage and, uh, floor plan, because we think it's very small for the area. So, I'm sure, if this gentleman comes in next year for it, I think he wouldn't be here because it's gonna affect his lot. So all of your lots gonna be able to expand without coming to us, because the way it was written, that law before, it wasn't fair, so we're trying to change it now. But that being said, right now, uh, I mean, we could argue this all night, but it's bottom line, it depends how the board member feels. I wanna go back and ask the board members how they feel again about it, and we go from there. I'll go back to Conti. How you think about it, Mr. Conti? How you feel about it?
Um, I, I think I'd like to, um, look at the plans a little bit better, I guess, just to see this, the elevation plans and whatnot.
Okay, Jim?
Um, I'm okay. I'm, I'm comfortable with, with granting this. I'm also comfortable with, um, continuing and allowing, um, the applicant to get all his plans as part of the file and on the record, et cetera, so that, um, there's no, I, I, I also, as much as I'm willing to grant this evening, I'm, I'm more interested in getting something that is not gonna be challenged, um, if we move too quickly.
Okay, Veronica?
Um, I am not in favor of this, um, because I feel like, um, our zoning bylaws are, are in place for a reason. And when we have neighbors that are in opposition to a request to grant a variance in this situation, I think they need to be able to depend on the bylaws that we have in place. I don't see a hardship here that would even give us a reason to say yes to this, regardless of what, what we feel like it should change. The fact is, it has not changed yet. If in a year it changed, then they don't even need to come before us, and this is a go for them. But right now, I can't say yes.
Okay, Jake?
Um, I feel like I've seen this now twenty times since I've been on the zoning board. Um, it's a very familiar thing. Um, I do think we should have a little bit better plans before we do, um, agree to vote on this. But, um, I, I wouldn't be opposed to it. I would, I would agree to it as long as I had a little bit more information on the house.
Okay, there you have it. So I guess we're gonna, you're gonna have, John, you're gonna have to drop off plans and come back on next hearing on, eh, two, uh, April twenty-eighth. Drop off full set of plans. You need like six, seven of them, uh, at the second, uh, at the planning department, and Mr. Buckland or Mrs. Raposo, and we'll pick them up. Uh, okay.
On, on this matter, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Um, i- if, if the applicant's gonna submit, um, elevations, does the applicant or any member of the board have opposition to the, the three people that spoke up from the neighborhood having access to see those in the interim? If they were able to go down and, and see those in advance, it might save us some time, uh, in the next meeting.
I, I'd be happy to drop them off at their house, too, an extra set.
Right, but that, 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 that planning department will put them on a website, so.
Okay.
The gentleman in Detroit, I, I think he said from Michigan, if he's not around here, he can go online and see it. You, you know what I'm saying? So she'll download them on the website, and then be hard copies, but if you, if you could come by the neighbor, give a bunch of plans, that'd be even better.
Yeah, not a problem.
All right, let's make a motion to continue till the April twenty.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, can I also, um, ask when he might wanna rethink the, um, one of the non-conformities for the impervious, uh, surface permitted? Like, uh, Veronica said, I mean, fifty percent's allowed, he's fifty-three point oh-six, so he might wanna think about, um, changing that also.
All right, try to, try to work on that, Mr.
Find a way to give it to that little bit is what, yeah, I get what you're saying. Make it easier to say yes.
One less non-conform.
Okay, are there any, uh, any others that might have any, uh, suggestions on that?
Many, any other suggestion on the other variances, or just that?
Just that variance there?
I mean, you have two, so if those two says no, you're dead on the water, so that's all it needs to people to say no, so you're probably gonna have to satisfy that.
Okay.
All right. Okay, very well. So let's, uh, can we move to continue?
Make a motion to continue, uh, until, uh, next meeting.
Okay, motion to continue till April twenty-eighth. Do I have a second?
Second, Jake, abortion.
Second by Jake. All in favor, say aye, Veronica?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Uh, Jim?
Aye.
Myself, aye, and Chris?
Aye.
All right, continues.
Thank you. We'll see you next time. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too.
You too.
Do we have any other business?
Oh, yeah, we have, uh, like, it's gonna take a one hour, come on, Lincoln.
You have something you wanna discuss?
Yeah, that would take an hour.
The menu for the annual, uh, zoning board appeals party?
The Swan Festival, and we're gonna talk about a lot of festival.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Oh, gee, so nobody wants to adjourn. That was like, oops.
We're asleep.
All right, all in favor, uh, June, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
You have to say your name, say your name.
Ken Buckland came back on just to say aye. Look at that, he's been dark all the time. Now all of a sudden, he's showing. Look at that, huh?
Did you hear his comment today about six-thirty or something like that? We're gonna, we're gonna have a meet at six-thirty or something like that.